One. Welcome to the Grand Prairie City Council meeting for Monday, April sixth. We will start off our council meeting as we always do with our national anthem and Oh Canada.
Oh, Canada, our homeland's native land. True, true love in all our common. With closing hearts we see thee right, true, nor strong and free. From far and wide, oh, Canada, we stand on God's shoulders. God's sheep are land, glorious and free. Oh, Canada, we stand on God's shoulders. Oh, Canada, we stand on God's shoulders.
Free ball. Oh, thank you as always to the National Film Board of Canada for the images of our country and to an alumni of our very own Grand Prairie Boys Choir, plus everybody else that had their microphones open for that rendition of Oh Canada. We'll launch into our council meeting with an adoption of the previous council meeting minutes. Now, council, please do show of hand. Let's see, Councilor Minhaas, Councilor Minhaas?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Given. I move the council adopt the minutes of the city council meeting held on Monday, March twenty-third, twenty-twenty as presented.
Thanks, Councilor Minhaas. Any discussion or debate on those minutes? Any errors or omissions that we need to correct before we adopt them? We don't see anybody raising their hands, so then I'll call for the vote, all in favor. And that looks unanimous, so no need to call for post, thank you. And we'll move now to our open delegation portion of our agenda. This is an opportunity that we have. Sorry, oh, sorry, the adoption of the agenda. Thanks, Councilor Ethan.
Thanks, Mayor Given, I've moved that council adopt the agenda as presented.
Thanks very much, Councilor Ethan. Any discussion or debate on the agenda as presented? Again, seeing nobody ringing in, I will call for the vote, please vote. My, there we go. I think that was unanimous again. My virtual background blurred out my hand because I moved it too quick. We're gonna have to get used to that. That finally brings us to the open delegation portion of our agenda. We have this at every regular city council meeting. My understanding is that administration has made special provision for those who wish to attend, be able to do that today, because we had some public hearings that were advertised in advance as being held at City Hall. There will be some opportunity for people who wish to attend at City Hall in person to attend the Zoom meeting from City Hall, even though the rest of us aren't there. So we made sure that that was possible and that applies later on. But we did have some delegations let us know in advance that they wish to present to this portion of the meeting, and the first was five point one, the Bear Creek Folk Festival. So, Arlene, do we have them on the call?
I think Shane is managing the calls.
Okay, thank you. So we'll look to, oh, there's Ms. Card right there. Ms. Card, welcome.
Hello, thank you so much. This is definitely a new way of doing things. So firstly, I just wanted to say thanks for letting me come and talk to you guys today, and I hope everyone's doing really well in this kind of crazy and trying time. I had a chance to watch the last meeting when you guys did your initial discussion about our application, and I have to say I was really touched by a lot of the kind words that people are saying and the support that the city is showing their festival. So I wanted to firstly say thanks so much. It's worth repeating, I know I've said it before, but worth repeating how grateful that I am and everyone at the festival is for the ongoing support. You know, it's really because of support from the city that an event like ours that requires so much to get started is able to do what we do and get off the ground. So, you know, I really wanna say thanks a lot for that. It means, it really means a lot. I did note on watching the meeting that there were, there seemed to be a few questions that came up or issues that might need addressing. So the main reason I wanted to come and talk to you today was just to kind of fill in a little bit of information, any little gaps that there might be, and then have an opportunity to answer any questions that there might be. Obviously, with the COVID- nineteen situation, there is an abnormal amount of uncertainty surrounding the summer, and we do need to be prepared for the possibility that a large-scale international event like ours, which brings a lot of flights, many, many flights of people into town from around the world, may or may not be advisable to run. And we'll really have to play that by year and make that call in a couple of months. But, you know, the, being socially responsible and ensuring the health and safety of our attendees and volunteers and our community in general is our first concern, so that when we make that decision, that's gonna be the first and most important factor. So, given a situation where we do actually have to reschedule the festival, we're fortunately not, we're fortunately in a, in a position where we will not actually experience a higher cumulative overhead with a two-year gap than we would have with the one and having run this year. So, and another point of note is that, I know there's a little concern around this, that we do have built into every single one of our artist contracts force measure clause, which actually conveniently even has a specific clause specifying if there is a world pandemic. So, any artist deposits that we have spent, any money that goes out is either refunded to us or gets just transferred to our twenty-twenty-one festival if we negotiate with the artists, that they'll just come back, you know, come and perform their planned spot the following year. So, and I mean, this year I had another really stellar lineup planned, so my, my plan really, for the most part, was to, you know, should we not be able to run this year, was to take the festival close to as-is and just, you know, as much as possible, kind of plop it into the next summer, maybe in some ways even stronger for it. So, either way, whether we run in twenty-twenty or twenty-twenty-one, I'm really happy to say that, you know, none of the money that we spent will be lost. You know, it will all go towards the festival that actually runs. Regardless of the outcome, we really have worked hard on a bunch of strategies to reduce or eliminate our monthly expenses, again, just to avoid having any, any more overhead so that the sum total of the, of the money that we spend over the two years would equal the one year. So I hope to, I hope this kind of helps alleviate some of the concerns that I know that the city had about funding going backwards or getting lost in any way. And I just want you all to know that you have my absolute solemn word, that this money would not be used for debt servicing, and it would all go towards the festival as promised in our application, primarily towards artist deposits. Having said that, it's really important that you understand how vital the timing is around this. I noted a little bit of discussion about the money maybe being withheld for a period of time, but this would in fact actually be really bad for us. Usually around this time, we have a lot of fundraising in play. We're doing, you know, variety fundraisers, we're selling a whole bunch of tickets, and this gives us the needed cash flow that we need to kind of navigate. With the COVID- nineteen situation has caused an indefinite postponement of all of our fundraising events and has also put a temporary complete halt on our ticket sales. And honestly, it'd be really tone deaf of us to be kind of promoting tickets right now. You know, we have to be sensitive to the current situation. So whether our event runs in twenty-twenty or in twenty-twenty-one, the city funds would be very important to us right now, and as soon as we're possible, able to get them to help alleviate this gap and allow us to meet the artist commitment needs or the artist commit, artist deposit commitments that we've made. It's also worth noting that we, we always do a portion of our booking as early as eighteen months ahead, we're always kind of working quite a bit ahead. So again, we would, in fact, we're already in discussion with artists about twenty-twenty-one, so again, either way, we're, we're sort of in a funny position right now with a full stop in our, in our cash flow. This complete stop is somewhat crippling to running, whether we're going twenty-twenty or twenty-twenty-one. So it would be of huge value to us to be able to receive the funds, any funds that were awarded at the earliest possible date, rather than having them withheld, as was discussed. The other thing was, if possible, kind of knowing all of this, if it helps kind of with the assurance about the artist deposits not being lost, if possible, to save any kind of reopening of the discussion. Unnecessarily, it would be ideal, given the situation, if we were able to reframe our requested funds as to be for the production of our fifth festival, whether that festival happens in twenty-twenty or whether it happens in twenty-twenty-one. We're guaranteeing it's going to happen and that that's where we wanna put these, these funds towards, but kind of to be less disruptive and having to come back. That would definitely, to our view, be the easiest and most efficient way of doing things if possible. Again, you have my absolute word that these funds will be used exclusively for the production of our next festival, regardless of which year that happens in, and that none will go backwards or into debt servicing. We actually have a different thing figured out that we're doing for that. So, anyway, that was mainly what I wanted to say, so thank you again so much and for your support and for helping us build this great legacy. And, yeah, I'd be happy, I'd just be happy to answer any questions that any of you might have.
Thanks, Ms. Card. So, council, any questions? I'll try to keep track of any hands. I saw Councilor O'Toole and then Councilor Plot. Councilor O'Toole? Councilor O'Toole, I'm not getting any audio, and I just wanna, I'll look to the city clerk to see if she's...
Yeah, no, I'm good here.
Okay.
So Sarah, thank you for coming in to, or coming and talking to council members. Just a couple of questions. Have you given any thought of postponing the concert for this year? I just know that the NHL, the CFL, the NFL, the basketball, all of these major sporting events have said, hey, this is a little bit beyond what we can handle this year. We're better off to look after the regular world and not have all these fans and guests in our buildings. What's your thoughts on that? Go ahead.
Oh, yeah, I mean, absolutely, we'd be foolish not to have given that a lot of thought. And honestly, you know, there, there is a decent likelihood that that happens. We, we need to operate kind of business as usual for a while, but, you know, we're, we're in close communications, I'm in, I'm in constant communication with a lot of other festivals. We're taking our cues primarily off of what the Edmonton Folk Fest does and what the provincial recommendations are. So, all the other major festivals are in the same boat as us. You know, Edmonton Folk Fest, they're a week apart from us, and they're a major international event as well. So, you know, at, at the point where they see that, you know, it would be not advisable to run their event, we have arranged with them that we would essentially wanna make that call at the same time. We do not wanna be the first festival in the country to kind of jump off the train. It doesn't seem right, especially since we're so late in the summer. So we're, we have to wait this out for a while, but we're absolutely making a Plan B and a Plan C and, you know, kind of even, even working out a bunch of really fun and interesting ideas of, you know, in the case where we can't run our major event, but what else, what other kind of nice things could we do for the community that are smaller and more local in the meantime that wouldn't be our festival, but that would still kind of have some community spirit? So we need to see what the situation's like in a couple of months, but we're, we're planning for every scenario and really watching closely what everybody else is doing.
What is your absolute drop-dead date that you're gonna pull the pin?
Well, I mean, I'm gonna say it's gonna happen before July first, but honestly, it's, again, you know, it'll happen before July first, if it happens. But there'll be, there are early summer festivals that will, would potentially pull the plug sooner, and as soon as you start seeing major Alberta festivals cancel, it's likely that it'll be a province-wide thing that happens, and we're all sort of in communication. So some of them have to make the decision a lot earlier because they're earlier in the summer, and we would probably follow suit to match their timelines, so nobody's kind of throwing anyone else under the bus.
Well, there's just a lot of uncertainty with the airlines, the border closures, we've got different levels of government that are controlling this. It's not the city of Grand Prairie, it's the province and the federal government. So I'm a little concerned that that drop-dead date would be that late. I would think that maybe middle of June or even June first, but that's...
I would, I would suspect that we're gonna know, you know, even more likely in May. Like I said, it's likely gonna happen, happen a lot earlier than that. That, you know, that's a date where we generally start, artists start, you know, buying plane tickets and things like that, and it's basically our absolute drop-dead has to happen before anyone spending any money. That's our big, you know, thing. We know we're gonna pull the plug, it has to be before any, any of our artists are investing any money in getting here. So we have a bit of time, but, but honestly, I mean, we're, we're watching the situation very, very closely, and there, there are a lot of factors at play, and a decision would likely be made much sooner than that.
Okay, thank you very much.
Councilor Plot?
Thanks, Mayor Given. Hey, Sarah, I really appreciate the chance to chat here and maybe put my mind at ease. Definitely trust you can do all the right things, it's just, this isn't my money. And I guess we'll have to change a little bit if it was my money versus the municipality's money. Just wondering on the bands when we book them, appreciating that we need to get these booked sooner than later, is there any way that we could have a guarantee or that the city could maybe look at procuring these bands or something different, just so we knew we had that money coming back? Just for my mind at ease, fearful that you book bands, we all trust you, and then you get the refunds and for whatever reason the city doesn't get reimbursed without that money. Can you just maybe explain to me how we can safeguard the city's investment in this?
Well, I mean, first, I'll kind of speak to a couple of things in order. With regards to ever kind of paying anybody directly, that, that would be incredibly difficult. I sort of sign my name in blood to agents that I will not divulge the amount that any specific artist is, is paid. You know, we sort of, we release an overall artistic budget, but it would, it would be highly irregular, and we wouldn't get looked at all that well if someone other than us started kind of negotiating fees directly with artists. You know, the, the likelihood, I mean, there is, there's a little bit of taking my word for it in that, you know, I can tell you quite honestly that the likelihood of us even being in a scenario where you'd be requesting a refund is, you know, next to zero in that, you know, we're planning on running the event. You know, we have the event ready to go, it's just a matter of whether it runs this year or next. We have, you know, our artistic budget is close to four hundred thousand dollars, which means we have to put out two hundred thousand dollars in artist deposits. That, that fact alone, the fact that we have to find two hundred thousand dollars in, in artist deposits before the festival is, is, I think, you know, some good evidence that that's where we need your, the money's needed for that. We'd have no reason to put it anywhere else. You know, as soon as, it's, like, in terms of other oversight, I mean, I, I mean, I mean, I'd be happy to put, I'm happy to put my name to it. I'm not sure what other, it, it's quite irregular to, to do much beyond that. If you had suggestions, you know, I definitely, I wanna keep everybody's mind at ease, but, you know, this, it's, it's sort of never been a problem in the past, and we're being very, very upfront and, and open and transparent about what, what the risks are. Luckily, like I said, the one really great thing is that there's no risk with regards to if we don't run this year, it's not gonna hurt us. It's gonna be a big pain in the butt for me in terms of workload, but it's, it's not gonna actually, it's not gonna put us financially any worse off. In fact, is likely to put us almost better off because we then have two years of fundraising against one festival. Counterbalanced by the fact this is a really rough time, but, you know, I don't think our festival is really honestly at risk of not running.
Okay, well, I appreciate that, and I guess I'll just follow up some questions of the administration later in the meeting, but I appreciate you having the chance to come chat with us.
Sure.
Councilor Blackburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given, and thank you, Sarah, for being here today to answer questions. Just to follow up on Wade's question, I can't imagine that there would be a problem with the fifth festival if it were to happen in twenty-twenty-one. I doubt that there would be an issue with it going ahead. Is there any risk that between now and the summer of twenty-twenty-one that the festival would become insolvent and that a twenty-one festival would not happen?
No, there is no risk of that.
Thank you.
Sarah, I had one for you. So if you received funding this year for the fifth festival, and the fifth festival didn't actually occur until twenty-twenty-one, would you imagine applying for funding in twenty-twenty-one to fund the twenty-twenty-one festival?
No, we would regard this, like I, like I said in my sort of reframing of my request, rather than considering this a request for our twenty-twenty festival, I would like to reframe it as a request for funding of our fifth festival, which means i- if it goes towards this year, then it goes towards this year, if it goes towards next year, then I guess we're not applying next year, which might actually give some other organizations a chance to apply for that money where, you know, there might be a little less competition coming in from us. So it might even kind of open up a neat opportunity for some other organizations in fact.
Okay, okay, great. Thanks for that clarity. Okay, did I see anybody else with any other questions for Sarah? I don't see anybody waving their hand, and I have a couple of council members that are off-screen right now on my screen. And so, Councilor O'Toole or Councilor Clayton, if you have your cameras turned off, don't expect me to see you waving your hand to wanna get in for a question, okay? And so we'll go now, then, thanks very much, Ms. Card, appreciate you being here, and I'll just look to the clerk and Mr. Bork, who's in the background there somewhere. Did we have any other presenters that wanted to speak to council as a delegation this afternoon? I did see... Yeah, Mr. Bork?
Not as a delegation, but council had requested that Wendy Bosch from the Downtown Association be available to answer questions during the call. I'd leave it to the chair to see how you manage that.
Yeah, so I would suggest that we bring Wendy in now, you know, as we get into the agenda for discussion and debates, and that's obviously council. It has been regular practice for the Downtown Association to speak to their budget during the delegation portion, and so we will invite Wendy to the stage, so to speak. Hi, Wendy, I see that you're on screen now, and we'll let you present council, and then council, if any questions that you had about the Downtown Association's budget that is later on in our agenda, now would be the time to ask them. Ms. Bosch?
Okay, I was asked to send in a letter stating reasons for our budget and maintaining our budget as a not-for-profit organization. So that was all sent to you last week, so if you have any questions in regards to that letter, I'll do my best to answer them.
Okay, okay, council, there were some questions at the committee of the whole meeting with respect to the Downtown Association's budget, in, you know, reflecting the change in times of COVID. Was there any council members that wished to, so we have the source right here, does anybody that wished to ask Ms. Bosch any questions about that? Or did the letter from the association provide the information council was looking for? Okay, I don't see, Councilor Blackburn?
Thank you. The way I recall the question, it was just to confirm, have the Downtown Association confirm to us that there were no changes in the... that there were no changes in the, in the budget that had been presented earlier as a result of, uh, what's gone on with the economy for, um, because of COVID. So, uh, just to hear from Wendy directly that, uh, that they confirmed that their budget remains the same, that would satisfy me.
Okay. Uh, well, I guess there is a couple of questions that is in the ballpark. And that would be the Street Performers Festival, which we are a, a big part of. Uh, we, we help sponsor some of the Stompede and of course Bear Creek Festival as well. We put some sponsorship into that and the Downtown Kickoff Festival. So, I guess we're, we're still in the stages that we don't know what's happening with the Street Performers, clearly the Bear Creek or the Stompede. I, I imagine the Stompede is over, um, in regards to a parade, I'm guessing, so I don't know for sure. That isn't a big part of our budget. That's a very, very small part because that is held outside our core anyway, for the most part, other than the, the parade. Um, so that one really doesn't change our budget much. Uh, the other two change it a little bit, um, but quite honestly, some things that we wouldn't do, um, potentially, we would be putting straight into marketing. Because to rebuild what, what we're going through right now will take, take some funds and some initiative to, to help out these members.
Okay. Thanks, Ms. Bosch. Any other questions for Wendy while she's here? I don't see anybody with anything. And so, uh, Wendy, thanks very much for making yourself available. Thanks for the letter last week, answering some of the council questions. Uh, thanks for being available this afternoon, uh, to chat with us.
Okay. Wow, that was easy. Like staple.
You need a button. Okay. Thanks very much. Um, and I'll ask last time, uh, did we have anybody else that wished to be in, uh, presenter in our open delegation portion of our agenda? Okay, um, looking at our clerk, uh, and it doesn't look like we do have anybody, so we'll move on. Uh, into items of unfinished business, our first item there, uh, our only item of unfinished business is item 6.1. This is with respect to bylaw C-1260-115, uh, an amendment to land use bylaw. And Counselor, uh, Minhoss had filed a notice of motion, uh, for council to reconsider motion. So there's sort of two parts here. There's one, uh, Counselor O'Toole, uh, sorry, Counselor Minhoss's motion, uh, asking council to reconsider. Um, and then the second part, if council approved, that would be actually the, uh, revote or reconsideration of the motion that was passed at that previous council meeting. So Counselor Minhoss, would you like to make the motion to reconsider?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Given. I'll move the, the council, I made the, uh, March 19, sorry, March 9 council meeting, I pressed the wrong button during the, my vote regarding the bylaw C-1260-155. Then I recite. The voting is done, so I made the mistake. So I'd like to consider this motion to reconsider. So we can move ahead with the unfinished business and, uh, because they have done a lot of work on that place. Move on and I'd like to, council to support it, this to reconsider the motion. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks very much, Counsel O'Toole. Want to make sure every, every council member's, uh, votes are recorded the way they intended them to be cast. Um, I'll just actually check with the clerk. Uh, I know that if council chooses to reconsider, then only certain council members would vote on that. It would be the council members that were in attendance at the meeting, uh, the public hearing that this is related to. But, uh, can all council members vote on the motion to reconsider? I mean?
That, uh, uh, within our, uh, procedure bylaw, it is only the council members that were present at the original public hearing that can participate. That includes participating in the discussion and the vote of the motion to reconsider.
Okay. Thanks for that clarity. So it, so in both cases, on both parts of this, it is only the council members that were in attendance. That means that Counselor Thiessen, myself, and Counselor Friesen, yeah, exactly, won't be voting on this. I'll continue to chair, um, but, uh, I will, you will not see the three of us vote on this motion or the one that would follow, uh, if council did pass this. So is there any discussion or debate on Counselor Minhoss's motion, uh, asking council to reconsider? I don't see anybody raising a hand. Uh, then I will ask the council members, uh, that are able to vote on this item to vote. If they show hands, all in favor. Thank you. I see, uh, five in favor, six in favor, excuse me. Uh, thanks. Got you, Counselor O'Toole. And, uh, second, uh, then we can move on to, uh, business arising. That would be to give second reading. Uh, we would need a motion for second reading again from one of the council members that was there at that meeting. Counselor O'Toole. Sure, Counsel O'Toole, you just have to make sure you get your, your mic is off there.
Me and all following rules here, I'm sorry. Um, I move the council give second reading to bylaw C-1260-115.
Okay. Thanks very much, Counsel O'Toole. Uh, so among those council members that were there, uh, for that public hearing, is there any discussion or debate? Counselor Bresi.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Given. Once again, I'll urge council to vote against this. And in the last time we discussed, so I'll get into all my reasons why I think land use planning is an inappropriate way to discuss taxes. But I will point out that this conversation we're having right now, where the will of council and the votes of council changed, the tax, changed the taxes that individual property has, this is exactly what we want to avoid in our tax, in our tax policies. This right here is a great example of why if we want to give relief to undeveloped land, then we need to do that through an overarching policy that, that applies to every landowner in an equitable, predictable way, instead of having a political process through the rezoning process that is just at the whim of council. So I think more than ever, going through this is showing why this is a bad course forward. I hope council will vote it down. Thanks.
Thanks, Counsel Bresi. Uh, I think I saw Counselor Blackburn's hand and then Counselor Palat.
Thank you, Mayor Given. Um, I agree with, um, Counselor Bresi regarding, um, equal treatment for, uh, all landowners in terms of, um, uh, the right kind of tax, um, environment in order to deal with this kind of situation. Uh, however, in this particular case, that does not yet exist. And, um, uh, I think to be fair to the applicant, um, uh, we ought to be voting in favor of this one. And this is counter to the, to the vote that I made last time. But having a chance to reconsider, um, uh, I, I think that we can't be penalizing, um, uh, a developer or a property owner, uh, because we don't have the right mechanism in place for them to apply in a different manner. So, uh, I'm going to vote in favor of this motion. Thank you.
Thanks, Counsel Blackburn. Counselor Palat.
Uh, thanks, Mayor Given. Just a question for administration. When the application came in, did they have to pay a fee to go through this process?
Sure. I see, uh, Ms. Downing.
Thank you. Here's the chair. Uh, yes, they did pay the fee for the rezoning. And I believe the fee was $4,000 for a rezoning application.
Okay, so.
I, I appreciate that. I wasn't, I wanted to just get clarification on that. The reason I ask that is to kind of be counterintuitive to what Counselor Bresi's saying. And to kind of echo what Counselor Blackburn's saying is we don't have a process currently in place. Um, we did collect $4,000 for this. And if we made a policy to blanket all these, it actually may cost the city more money. And we may have applications come in that people wouldn't have bothered applying from before. So I'm definitely in support of this because I think in the bigger picture, as much as Counsel Bresi may be correct that we don't have, some to address this today, we're penalizing them, they paid $4,000. And I'm not of the opinion that this is actually going to be better for the city if we made a blanket policy because you will probably have landowners come forward that would have never went through this process, that now will. So I urge council to just support this one. And if this is something that Ms. Bresi's really concernable, um, I know he likes to try to write some policy. Maybe he, uh, comes up with something the council has debate on at, at a later point. But hopefully we can pass this through to the municipal owner.
Thanks, Counselor Palat. Uh, do I see Counselor O'Toole's hand? Yeah, Counsel O'Toole.
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. I, uh, I would urge my fellow councillors to support this too. As for the reasons stated by, uh, Counselor Blackburn and Palat, I feel that, uh, we don't have a policy at this point in time where we, uh, um, can go forward. And if we want to develop one, then we need to do that. But at this time, he hasn't done anything in that property in seven years. The economy has been not egregious. And, uh, I think that, uh, he, I'm gonna give him the benefit of the doubt. And I'm gonna support this motion. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Counsel O'Toole. Was there anybody else that, uh, wished to get in on the discussion debate on this matter? I'm looking at my council members that were there and attended. I don't see anybody raising their hand or, or making move that direction. So then I will call for the vote on, uh, the motion to give bylaw, give second reading bylaw C-1260-115. Um, I'll call for the vote, all in favor. Okay, thank you. I see five in favor and opposed. I see one opposed. Okay, thank you. So that was motion for second reading. Um, can I have a motion for third reading? Counselor O'Toole.
And we don't have to have a majority on this third reading at this point in time?
Uh, I would defer to the clerk, but I would say that since first reading actually did occur at a previous council meeting, uh, we're not trying to have all three readings in the same meeting today. So no, we shouldn't have, uh, motion to have to have third reading. It is actually just third reading.
Okay, then I will move forward and I move the council give third reading, third reading to bylaw C-1260-115 being an amendment to the land use bylaw.
Okay, thanks very much, Counsel O'Toole. Any discussion or debate on third and final reading of this land use bylaw amendment? Again, I don't see anybody, uh, raising their hand or, uh, motioning to that effect. Then I will call for the vote on third reading, all in favor. And opposed. Thank you. So one opposed, uh, same result as that last vote. And so I think that concludes all of our business on item 6.1. Counsel Manhott, thanks very much for bringing, uh, the council attention. Uh, the, uh, you know, if we want to ensure that we get everybody's votes reflected accurately, uh, we'll move on then to item 7.1 and an update from our CEO, Coracio Guante.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will provide a quick update about, uh, COVID and non-COVID, uh, related matters and the, uh, regular businesses of the municipality in this, uh, this time. So Alberta confirmed yesterday another 69, uh, new cases of, uh, COVID-19, bringing the total about, uh, near, uh, 1,300. Uh, of these cases, 48 are currently in a hospital, uh, with 13 in the intense, intensive care, uh, units. Uh, unfortunate, unfortunately, three, uh, additional patients have died, bringing the total to 23 in the province. Uh, at the national level, Quebec is, um, uh, leading the number of cases with more than 7,000 cases so far and 75 deaths. Um, 152 of the total cases, um, in the province are suspected as community transmission. This is very important because community transmission cases, uh, have intensified, uh, in the last few days. And it's very important, um, to keep, um, the strong social distancing measures in place. As you all know, here in Grand Prairie and in the region, we have relatively low, uh, number of cases. So I, uh, reinforce the concept of, uh, keeping a strong social distancing measures to the community to keep these numbers, uh, low. We are working on some pre-planning for, uh, potential flood or fires event, events, uh, that may overlap, uh, with the COVID-19 pandemic as well. As you'll recall in previous seasons, we experiencing, experienced some, some flood events and wildfires, uh, in the northern part of the province and northeast British Columbia. So we are, um, making some preparations, um, in, uh, to cope with those events, uh, on top of the COVID-19 pandemic. Uh, in terms of, uh, G-Prep, our emergency operations center is operating a hundred percent, uh, remote as a virtual EOC, uh, to avoid close proximity of, uh, key emergency personnel and it's, it's working pretty well. Um, a highlight is, uh, the Daybar, uh, center is functioning as a shelter to accommodate some homeless individuals as overflow from a rotary house. There are about 50 people, uh, housed there right now. Uh, food and medication services are provided and this is a 24/7, uh, facility. In terms of, uh, food supply and water supply in, in the city, uh, is, uh, very stable in general in the region, uh, with some daily variations, uh, in some products. And there's a lot of cooperation from, uh, supermarkets, uh, and they're limiting some items to two, uh, maximum per customer. So I will provide a quick update about the different service areas, uh, in terms of regular business of the municipality. For the infrastructure and economic development service area, they have developed some cross-departmental list of projects that are ready or close to ready for, uh, procurement. Uh, they developed, uh, tiered service scenarios for parks operations depending on staffing availability for the summer months. Um, we have rescheduled some ICF, uh, mediation meetings for, uh, uh, mid-June with some backup dates for July and August depending how the pandemic evolves. Economic Development has had daily meetings with the chamber and the county to coordinate, uh, the local response. Also, the Economic Development Department held a meeting with the Economic Development Advisory Committee, members of council, the Chamber of Commerce and the Downtown Association to source ideas and feedback regarding business recovery plans. For the next couple of weeks, uh, the, the Transportation Department is preparing for the spring melt. Uh, we have, uh, trucks on standby and crews that are ready. Um, and adequate, adequate staffing levels, uh, are in place to manage, uh, the spring runoff. Residential snow clearing should be completed by the end of, uh, this week. Economic Development, um, developed an advisory service voucher program to be launched in coordination with the Chamber of Commerce and the county. This program, uh, should launch, uh, by the end of this week. Uh, Environmental Services has developed an at-home gardening program. Um, will be sourcing products from local suppliers. Uh, this program, uh, will be, uh, deployed in two phases, with the first phase focusing on, on plants like lettuce, green onions and tomatoes that can be started indoors. And a second phase in the spring, uh, that will focus on root vegetables. Uh, you will hear more information about this program, um, in the next few days. Uh, finally, engineering, um, is closely monitoring the capacity of suppliers and utilities while continuing to roll out tenders and requests for proposals, uh, for the summer construction season as part of our capital construction plan. For the community services, service area, um, there is a program being run out of, uh, Revolution Place currently. Um, it started on April 1st until April 15th. That is, um, showcasing artists providing online entertainment at 2:00 PM every day on Facebook and Instagram, again from April 1st to April 15th. Um, this idea, um, came up, uh, to allow the public to, to enjoy a few virtual minutes, uh, with the artists in a very innovative and neat concept, uh, ensuring safety. So there is a list of artists, uh, on the Revolution Place, uh, site and on City's website. So you can see the artists that, that is, uh, they're playing at 2:00 PM every day. The Easter Extravaganza Online Coloring Contest for kids, uh, ages two to 12, began on April 1st and is running through, uh, April 12th. So, uh, participants can email their entry to programming or share via direct message to the Muscito Park Facebook page. Uh, the winners from each age category will be randomly selected to win a prize, uh, courtesy of Pizza Hut and the East Link Center. We're doing some, uh, small adjustments to, uh, and, and regular transit and, uh, and, uh, accessible transit as well. And we are, um, doing some experiments with on-demand and on-demand model using smaller community bath concept. Uh, additional details will be communicated in the coming days on the City's website. Uh, finally, staff are in the process of contacting the tenants, um, regarding lease agreements for, uh, East Link Center or other facilities where we have, uh, um, contracts in place with tenants. And for example, food vendors at, at, at the East Link Center. And we're taking a, an approach, a fair approach regarding how to manage, uh, the vendors in this period of time. Uh, they are unable to operate, uh, their businesses, um, because of the facility closures. So probably we will exercise, um, extension on the original lease. Uh, a consistent approach will be used and every effort is made to assist with the future viability of those business. For the protective and social services side, um, as you may know, enforcement services, uh, the province has authorized community peace officers to enforce the Public Health Act. Uh, enforcement will assist the province in achieving compliance with public health orders. Uh, due to unexpected staffing shortage, shortages at the county, uh, city enforcement personnel, uh, staffed the regional town over the past couple of weeks. Uh, county employees have since returned and, uh, uh, found this back into regular, uh, operations. For community social development, uh, CSD department is heavily involved in providing the emergency social services components of the GPREP, uh, response. FCSS, uh, will administer the provincial funding recently announced to support vulnerable persons service providers. Uh, they are slightly lower, uh, call volumes and also the detachment has implemented their, uh, business continuity plan. Uh, the fire department is heavily involved in GPREP operations and several members are assigned, uh, key roles in our EOC. Uh, some, uh, technical difficulties at Telus Mobility, um, mostly last week are at times affecting mobile customers' ability to contact nine-one-one. So GPREP is issuing daily updates, uh, to COVID nineteen and people can subscribe, uh, on the City's website and the email notifications sign up to receive daily updates from, uh, GPREP. So finally, the corporate services, service area. Uh, the finance department secured a thirty-five million dollar, uh, below prime line of credit with CIBC to manage cash flow during the, uh, due to property tax deferrals. And you see an item in the council's agenda today relative to this topic. Uh, communications and marketing, uh, they continue to support both GPREP and CityComms, uh, GIS and IT. Their remote employee server setup is completed and we're adding another server to increase capacity. Um, we are, uh, experiencing, uh, successful support for, uh, virtual, virtual council committee meetings and council meetings as we're having right now. And we are doing a trial, um, with Telus to upgrade the network speed overall. Uh, corporate efficiency and strategic initiatives, they are supporting the organizational business continuity and the delivery of critical system functions. Uh, HR department supported, uh, organizational temporary layoff process that happened, uh, last week. Taxation and assessment, uh, they extended the deadline, uh, for, uh, withdrawal from the tax installment payment plan, the TIP plan. And procurement is supporting GPREP for logistical requirements. There's business continuity, um, continues for security supply change on operational goods. Custodial, fleet and aquatics are secured for three to six months. We continue to issue competitive bids for, uh, infrastructure projects coming in summer. And finally, um, they are completing the rollout of DocuSign that is a platform to enable digitally signed contracts. So this is a brief update about the city operations, uh, during the last two weeks and looking at the next two. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks very much, Mr. Guante. Uh, any questions for the city manager, uh, coming arising out of his update, uh, Counselor Peterson?
Uh, thank you very much, uh, Mayor Given, and thank you very much, uh, Mr. City Manager, uh, Mr. Guante, for all the hard work that you and our staff are putting in to ensure that our community is, uh, is functioning as optimally as we can under these conditions. I guess my question is just in regards to, um, the, the high COVID, uh, infection rate out in, uh, outlying, uh, rural, uh, residential like, uh, Thaler and High Prairie, Peace River and all that. Have we been in discussions with, uh, Alberta Health Services as to how Grand Prairie might be able to manage or potentially offset that and expose our, our people to, to that infection as well?
Mr. Guante?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, yes, we have been in contact with Alberta Health Services. Regularly, we, uh, connect with them almost on a daily basis. Uh, they're monitoring the three locations, um, uh, northeast of the city where there's a spike on the number of, uh, COVID nineteen cases. And, um, there are two, uh, different options depending the severity of the, um, um, illnesses. They can direct the patients to, uh, Edmonton or to Grand Prairie depending the triage system and the capacity of hospitals in the, in the area. Um, as you know, uh, there is actually one case right now here in the city, uh, in the hospital, uh, in doing treatments. So Alberta Health Services, they feel confident in the ca- capacity of the local hospital right now to manage the situation that is growing in our northeast, uh, region of the province. Um, and the possibility to, to send patients to Edmonton is, is always there. But, um, for now, with the strong social distancing measures, uh, put in place, uh, a few weeks ago, uh, you can see that the number of cases in the region is, is relatively low. And the capacity of the health medical system is, is still, uh, available to treat potential new cases coming.
Okay. No, thank you very much for that, Horacio. Uh, thanks for monitoring that and being in contact with, uh, EHS as regards to plans and potentialities. Really appreciate it.
Thanks, Counselor Peterson. Any other questions for Mr. Guante? I don't see any, then, uh, the next item on our agenda. Uh, sorry, we should have a motion to receive the CAO's update for information. Actually, we should tie that off with a motion to receive, Counselor Minha. You'll have to get your microphone, Counselor Minha.
Thank you, Mayor, uh, Mayor Given. I give the, uh, counsel moved, uh, received the information from our CEO, Horacio Guante.
Okay, thanks very much, Counselor Minha. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote, all in favor. Thank you. That looks unanimous. Um, that motion carries. And so our next item was an economic update, item seven point two. Is that you, Mr. Guante, or Rebecca Lee? Hello, Rebecca. You just popped up on screen.
Technology is amazing. Uh, thank you, Mayor Given. Um, thank you, council, for an opportunity to give you a little bit of an update. Uh, we felt it was important to keep council up to date on the activities coming out of the Economic Development Department, um, just given the vast impact, uh, not only to the health and wellness of our residents, but also to our businesses as well. Um, for some background information, on Thursday, March nineteenth, uh, the city of Grand Prairie, the county of Grand Prairie, uh, through our Economic Development Department and the, um, Chamber of Commerce joined together and formed what we've, um, I guess nicknamed the Business Resiliency Task Force, or BRT, uh, in order to provide a coordinated approach to supporting our local businesses. Uh, the approach really has been focused on resiliency and hoping, helping to, um, intervene earlier on and provide supports to businesses to help them through the devastating, uh, effects of COVID nineteen, um, rather than purely focusing on a recovery effort after the fact. Um, in our first few weeks, we've been busy. Uh, the task force is meeting daily to ensure that we're responsive to the quickly evolving needs of the business community. Um, and we've rolled out a number of, um, initiatives to date. First of all, our first priority was just rolling out a website, ensuring that we had access to accurate information for local businesses, not so much focusing on the health impacts because, um, that is being taken care of by, um, our representatives in GPREP and Alberta Health Services, but really focusing on connecting businesses with the appropriate, uh, support from both the federal and provincial, uh, governments. Um, early on, the economic developers of Alberta, uh, released a business survey. Uh, they received over nine hundred responses, uh, in the week that it ran. And early on in the pandemic and, and the impact, we saw the, uh, overwhelming response from businesses that they're in most immediate need with accessing, uh, those funding sources and understanding how to navigate them. So that's really given us guidance for our direction moving forward. Um, so we can, we've created a web page, um, on the grandprairiechamber.com. Uh, we have a business resiliency page that is next in front and center and we continue to update, um, as new information becomes available. And then also we've included a free-form, um, survey, I guess, uh, opportunity for businesses to, uh, request specific resources or suggest additional programming. Uh, we've also launched weekly webinars. Uh, we, so far, we have scheduled them each Friday from noon till one and have seen a great uptake of that. Uh, our first one had, uh, just under ninety businesses participate. And then we have been making those available online as well for people to refer to, uh, after the fact. Uh, we've been attempting to take these, uh, global resources and drill them down to a Grand Prairie specific level, uh, helping to guide businesses for who they should be connecting with within the community. Um, on a little bit of a lighter note, we've launched a social media campaign just encouraging residents to support local businesses. Uh, it's being run through the chamber's webpage and businesses, or excuse me, residents are encouraged to, um, post a picture or a testimonial of how they're supporting a local business and use the hashtag love local GP. Um, of course, while respecting social distancing, we're also encouraging residents not just to think of their retail businesses because I think that's quite often what people think of when you think of, of shop local, but how are you also supporting our professional services, um, in unique and innovative ways? Through that campaign, we are giving away, uh, gift certificates to, uh, through the chamber each week and then, um, monthly prizes of five hundred dollars in chamber checks and then an, an overall prize of fifteen hundred dollars as well. Our newest initiative, um, that I'm excited to update council on today is the Business Advisory Voucher Program. Again, uh, just recognizing that the feedback that we've received, uh, via the survey through Economic Developers of Alberta and through, uh, extensive stakeholder engagement with our local businesses, um, showed that businesses are really just uncertain right now in trying to navigate the processes and, and access to federal and provincial funding is the number one priority closely followed by, uh, ensuring their cash flow and adjusting their operations. Uh, additional, a result of the survey showed that, uh, businesses expected within the immediate two weeks of the pandemic, which is right about where we're at now, I guess, uh, from the time that the survey was taken, showed that businesses anticipated shifting their focus towards, um, customer traction and marketing and, uh, re- relaunching their businesses in new and innovative ways to help them, uh, survive through the next few weeks. And so using that information, we've developed the Business Advisory, uh, Voucher Program. Um, the program will consist of two phases. It's meant to be really quick and reactionary. Um, the first phase will provide up to five hundred dollars in, in funding for business. Uh, um, excuse me, up to five hundred dollars or, uh, four hundred, or, or four hours of consulting services. Um, the program will be administered by the BRT group through the Chamber of Commerce and businesses will be able to apply on the chamber's website, uh, with a very short, quick survey of five questions or less. And the committee has committed to turning around, uh, approval process by five o'clock the following business day. Um, that will grant them access to the five hundred dollars of, uh, funding, which will be referred through to Community Futures. Community Futures will then help work with them to develop a plan of attack, um, a business resiliency plan, uh, for that immediate week. For many of these businesses, we're anticipating it might just be a little bit of handholding, helping them to navigate some of the processes, which paperwork they need to put together, uh, where they need to apply online, uh, ensuring that they have their Alberta ID and their federal registration in line, uh, so that they're ready to access program. Um, however, we also have kept it open so that they can use part of those four hours to refer through to an accountant, uh, HR advisor, marketing, IT, um, or mental health counseling as well. Um, phase one is again meant to be really quick and precise, so it must be completed within one week. Um, within that one week period, there will be an additional assessment done and decision made as to whether they would be referred to to phase two. Phase two is where, um, we have a little bit more time and we've opened it up to four weeks for a maximum of three thousand dollars of funding. Again, businesses will continue working with Community Futures and then be referred out to a list of pre-approved service providers in those service areas that I mentioned previously. Throughout the four-week program, they'll have ongoing counseling with Community Futures and then have a pre-planned, uh, business resiliency plan that they'll work through with the different consultants that they have, uh, contracted through this program. At the end of the program, uh, they will, uh, be required to submit a graduation report. We've, we've termed it. Uh, and then there will be additional follow-ups, uh, six months later, just to assess the level of success and the impact that we had on the business. We've also in- included recording mechanisms throughout the report, uh, throughout the period in order to ensure that we are meeting the, the business needs as they move through this process rather than finding out, uh, after the fact that it didn't provide any value. Uh, the program will be funded through existing budget within the Economic Development Operating Budget. We've committed twenty-five thousand dollars from our budget currently and, uh, county has been invited to partner on the funding in this initiative through a matching twenty-five thousand dollars, um, funding request. This is in front of the County of Grand Prairie's council for funding approval today. So we should hope to have, uh, final decision probably any minute now here. Um, but the program will be moving ahead either way, uh, with the city's funding contribution. Uh, we are also exploring additional opportunities to leverage funding and we've put out requests through, uh, federal and provincial bodies to see if there is any opportunity to help, um, grow the program beyond, uh, a existing scope. So that is our main focus currently. We are, we're planning on rolling out this program before the end of the week. Um, and then on the city, city side, um, in terms of our Economic Development Department internally, uh, as, um, Horacio mentioned, we have engaged with the Economic Development Advisory Committee. We had a really good, comprehensive conversation last week and some good ideas were brought forward. And then I continue to reach out, follow up on some of the, uh, the proposals that came on as a result of that meeting. Um, we continue to coordinate and touch base with all of the grocers and pharmacies as a part of our, uh, role in supporting GPREP. And as well as now we are working on engaging with the hotels, um, ensuring that we're providing support and in the case that, uh, GPREP has any needs, um, to call on our hotels as we have in previous, uh, emergent situations, that we are ready to go. And with that, I will, um, ask any questions.
Okay, thanks very much, Ms. Lee. Any questions for Ms. Lee? I see Counselor Peterson. Was that a stretch or was that your hand? Okay, just a stretch, okay. Uh, I don't see anybody, uh, raising their hand. Rebecca, thanks very much for your work and, uh, the high level of collaboration between the city, the chamber, uh, the county and Community Futures. I think that really shows the institutions that are in place, uh, acting like they're supposed to in a time like this. Um, uh, for council information, I was on a, a Chamber of Commerce roundtable, uh, with Rebecca and some of her colleagues. Um, and it was good to see that, uh, by and large, the things that were within our ability, um, we were already doing or really sort of understood. Um, and I think Rebecca and the team were able to sort of, uh, have been able to revise their programs based on the input of business owners. So, uh, just kudos to you, Rebecca. You and your team, I think you're doing a great job. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Can we get a motion to receive the economic, uh, update for information, Counselor O'Toole? Sure, Counselor O'Toole, you're just gonna have to make sure you get your microphone if you're gonna make the motion.
Sorry about this. Technology is changing every day. Uh, I'll make that motion to, uh, accept the, uh, the, accept the Economic Development update. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Counselor O'Toole. Any discussion or debate on that motion? Seeing none, then I will call for the vote, all in favor, please. And, uh, is that all my council members? Is that all of us? Six, seven, eight, and I'm, and myself. I wasn't counting me. Okay. That, that motion carries. Thanks very much. Uh, and we'll move on to item seven point three. I see, uh, we've been joined by Ms. White Way. Danielle, do you want to introduce this, uh, borrowing bylaw?
Thank you, Mayor Given. So, um, I am just here today to recommend that council give all three readings to borrowing bylaw C fourteen twenty-four as presented. Uh, as a result of the COVID nineteen pandemic, the city is faced with less receipts into our general bank account than usual. Uh, although cash and investment balances are Although cash and investment balances are sufficient to see us through this current situation, borrowing rates are far lower than the interest rates that the city earns on our investment portfolio. So it is prudent for us to secure a credit facility to temporarily borrow during this time, rather than to withdraw from our investments. So the temporary borrowing bylaw has been presented. We're asking that an operating line of credit in the amount of thirty-five million, this will ensure the city has enough cash flow to meet service delivery requirements throughout the coming months. And approving this bylaw will ensure that the requirements set out in the Municipal Government Act and by the borrowing institution are met.
Thanks very much, Ms. White Way. Can I get a motion for first reading? We'll do first reading, and if that passes, then on second reading, when we had discussion debate, we'll have time for questions. So a motion for first reading, Counselor Minhoss? And again, your microphone, Counselor Minhoss.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, given I moved the council give the first reading to give the first reading to bylaw C fourteen twenty-four being a borrowed money bylaw.
Thanks very much, Counselor Minhoss. No discussion or debate on first reading. I'll call for the vote, all in favor? Okay, I think that motion passes unanimously. And then I'll look for a motion for second reading. Counselor Minhoss, do you want to do that one as well?
Yes, I'll move the council give the second reading to bylaw C twenty-four, sorry, fourteen twenty-four.
Thanks very much, Counselor Minhoss. Okay, motion for second reading, open for discussion debate. I see first Counselor Bressi and then Counselor Palat.
Great, thank you. Just a question about the length of time to repay this. I see the bylaw only extends to December thirty-first, but what happens if we're still owed a significant portion of taxes by December thirty-first and we haven't been able to recover those yet?
Ms. White Way?
Thank you, Mayor Given. We are not anticipating that we won't have sufficient. Our levy is much, much higher than what we're asking for for temporary borrowing. However, if circumstances did arise that we had a balance still owing at December thirty-first, we could bring this bylaw back for an extension of the date that we put on here. And as well, CIBC has assured us that there is no problem if we have to extend beyond that date.
Thank you. Okay, thanks, Ms. White Way. I see Counselor Palat and then Counselor Thiessen.
Thanks, Mayor Given. Thanks, Counselor Bressi, for asking the other questions I would ask. My other one was more, and I don't expect an answer on this now, but will council be getting kind of an updated report? I know we usually quarterly audit statements on what we're projecting the surplus of the city to be with some of the actions we've taken and some of the expenses that have changed potentially to the city. Do you have any idea what we think the surpluses would look like for the year if that unfolded? Just more for me, for curiosity, just to see, because there would be funding coming from other sources, but I'm just curious if you've started looking at that.
Ms. White Way?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Yes, so we do report quarterly to committee. That is going forward as planned. So where March thirty-first is our first quarter end, it's currently what we're working on now. So we're taking all this situation into consideration, and we'll have available at a May committee meeting an update. If there's anything in the meantime, of course, we'll bring it through committee. But our planned time to bring forward our forecast would be with our normal quarter report.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Counselor Palat. Counselor Thiessen?
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. I'm not sure of the relevancy of this question, but I'm just curious. In regards to the borrowing bylaw, the rate of investments versus the borrowing interest, it was stated also in the report as well as verbally here, Danielle, that the rate of investments is higher at the current rate of the borrowing interest. How would we, would we be using our investment earnings to pay off the debenture payments on the interim or? I guess that's my question.
Ms. White Way?
Yeah, just to float the balance until we pay it back.
Thank you, Mayor Given. So what we will do is make interest-only payments, and that's been worked into our cash flow projections and what we need. We will, upon receipt of our levy, be able to, the plan is to be able to repay the debt in full at that time.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
And then I saw Counselor Minhoss next.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Given. Danielle, my understanding is this is our credit line. So if we use the money, we're gonna pay the interest only as much money we use. You answered that one, you're gonna pay the interest only. But this is just for, in case we need it, that's our credit line extended more than we normally have, right?
Ms. White Way?
Correct. This isn't to cover, let's say, a variance from budget. We're just assuming that we'll still be able at this time to stay on budget. And we've done a very conservative cash flow approach, assuming maybe worst-case scenario. And we believe that thirty-five million is more than sufficient to cover what we just need in the interim for cash flow. Rather than pull from investments, we'd rather earn the money on investments and just borrow temporarily on this revolving line of credit.
Okay, thanks, Ms. White Way. Thanks, Counselor Minhoss. Were there any other questions for Danielle before we moved on to the vote for second reading? Any debate on second reading? I don't see anybody moving to raise their hand for debate. So then I'll call for the vote on second reading, all in favor? Okay, thank you. That motion carries unanimously. Can I have a motion to have third reading, Counselor Minhoss?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Can I have the third reading of bylaw C fourteen twenty-four at this meeting?
Okay, thanks very much, Counselor Minhoss. Any discussion or debate on the merits of having third and final reading? So this is one of those ones where we're having a motion to have third and final reading. And if it passes unanimously, then we would have that third and final reading here tonight. I don't see anybody raising their hand. I would encourage councils to support this motion so that we can move forward with third and final reading. Given how quickly this situation is evolving, I think we want to ensure that our administration is fully equipped to be able to deal with this as quickly as possible. And being able to get this kind of line of credit established to the mag, of this size as quickly as they had is a commendable work on behalf of our admin. I think we need to do our job by passing this tonight. So I'd encourage all council members to vote unanimously in support. I will call for the vote, please vote. Thank you. That motion does carry unanimously, so we can have third and final reading, Counselor Minhoss.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I asked council to give the third reading bylaw C twenty, bylaw C fourteen twenty-four being a borrowed money bylaw.
Okay, thanks very much, Counselor Minhoss. Again, any discussion or debate on third and final reading? Counselor O'Toole? Go ahead, you just have to get your microphone, Counselor O'Toole.
I just want to echo what you said earlier. I'm glad that our administration, our finance department is forward-thinking and looking after the scenarios that we encounter every day and looking forward to making sure that we have the finances to look after our debts. So thank you.
Thanks, Counselor O'Toole. I don't see anybody raising their hand, so then I'll call for the vote on third and final reading, all in favor? Okay, that motion carries unanimously, thank you. Thanks very much, everyone. I think that handles everything. Thanks very much, Ms. White Way, for being here this afternoon. And we'll move on to, thank you, we'll move on to item seven point four, an ICF update. This is with respect to the City of Grand Prairie's negotiations with the County of Grand Prairie. And I don't know if we have anybody from admin to introduce this. We did hear a little bit about it, I think, from Director Galante. But is there any, do we have anybody from admin that was gonna introduce this? And that's totally fine, Mr. City Manager, I see you popped in.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you are aware, the new deadline for ICF has been extended by Municipal Affairs in one year, so from April twenty twenty to April twenty twenty-one. We completed a set of negotiations with the county recently, and we are going into mediation, that's the next step in the process. So we're having multiple conference calls with two mediators and arranging some dates, tentatively in June, July, or August, depending the evolution of the epidemic. So this is a motion discussed, a recommendation discussed previously for council to reiterate their willingness to continue with the process, continue the negotiations and the mediation process with our neighbors in the county. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Mr. Galante. So I'd look for a motion, we have a recommended motion in the council agenda. Counselor Clayton? Counselor Clayton, your microphone?
Thanks, Mayor Given. I would move that council direct the mayor to write the County of Grand Prairie and the Minister of Municipal Affairs to inform them of our request to proceed to the mediation stage of the intermunicipal collaboration framework. The city intends to set up mediation dates in person or remotely beginning in June twenty twenty. Further, the city tends to, intends to complete the agreement in its entirety by March thirty-first, twenty twenty-one.
Thanks very much, Counselor Clayton. Open for discussion and debate on the motion? Any discussion or debate? Counselor Friesen?
Thanks, I'll be supporting this motion wholeheartedly, and I don't think that there's any reason. We've got a bit of a glitch in a restructuring of how we do business, but this is a piece of business that we've been working very hard on together with the county for a number of months now. And to have it waylaid because there's a new deadline when we're prepared would be, I think, a big mistake. We would lose some momentum there. And even though we may or may not be able to meet in person, I don't think that that's any reason also to postpone. So I'm quite pleased to support this motion, and I hope that we continue with the county in, with the momentum that we have had and go on to mediation and get this settled sooner rather than later. Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor Friesen. Any other discussion or debate on the motion? Okay, I don't see anybody raising their hand, so then I will call for the vote on item seven point four, all in favor? Okay, that motion carries unanimously. And we'll move on to committee business. I would look for a motion on item eight point one, the council committee the whole minutes from March thirty-first. Can I get a motion for that set of minutes? Counselor Thiessen?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would move that council direct the mayor to, oh, sorry, I would move that council adopt the minute, council committee the whole meeting held Tuesday, March thirty-first, twenty twenty as presented.
Great, thanks very much, Counselor Thiessen. There's only so much directing of me you can do in one meeting.
It's true.
That's not true.
Get on it.
Any discussion or debate on the minutes? Is there any errors or omissions before we adopt them? Counselor Blackburn, did you see something?
Thank you, Mayor Given. No, no errors or omissions. I just wanted the opportunity, since we're not going to have a roundtable discussion according to our agenda, that there's something that I wanted to mention once we have passed this, this motion. So if I can have that opportunity, once we pass the motion, I would appreciate it.
Sure, thanks very much, Counselor Blackburn. Any other discussion or debate on the motion to adopt that set of minutes? Again, seeing none, then I'll call for the vote, all in favor? Thank you. Okay, I think that motion carries unanimously. Counselor Blackburn, there's something you wanted to raise at this stage?
Yes, I did, just, sorry, just give me a moment to find it on my computer here. I received an email from a resident the other day that I just wanted to bring to the attention of council. It's from, it's from Susan McKenzie, and she says, "Never in all my years as a walker in Grand Prairie have the trail and sidewalks been so well-maintained. Not just lately, which has been huge for me, but all winter long, people I know have commented on how well the walking areas have been maintained. The guys doing the work all get a high five from me, and I want city council to know how much this is appreciated." And so I wanted to bring that to your attention because the minutes included a report on snow plowing. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Counselor Blackburn. And Counselor Blackburn, you disappeared in that somewhere, so make sure that you get your camera back on because as we move on, so thank you. Okay?
Yes, because I was reading something, I think.
Yeah, thank you. So we'll move on to item eight point one-one, the FCM Sustainable Communities Award. So we were in council committee the whole, and so any council member could make these motions. Of course, we're not looking for the chair. I think I saw Counselor Bressi first.
Thank you. Just after you told us we can't direct you anymore, I'm eager to make this motion. I would move that council direct the mayors to write a letter that supports the submission of the Transit Solar Project to the twenty twenty FCM Sustainability Awards.
Thanks very much, Counselor Bressi. And to be clear, I said there's only so much you could do in one meeting, and that was inclusive of this, not the thing Thiessen was trying to do. Is there any discussion or debate on the motion? I think submission of this, to this for consideration on this award requires a council resolution. Administration has already developed the submission, and I think the intention is to submit this package that is pretty, pretty unique in Canada, maybe unique in Canada. And so I don't know if there's any other discussion or debate. Again, seeing none, then I will call for the vote, all in favor?
A lot of clean hands today.
Yeah, that motion carries unanimously. Thank you. And we'll move on to item eight point one point two with respect to the twenty twenty large-scale tourism grant funding. Counselor Thiessen?
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. I would move that council approve.
Sorry, Counselor Thiessen, I'm just gonna recognize Counselor Clayton here at this stage. Counselor Clayton?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would like to declare a conflict of interest as I am doing some work with Bear Creek Folk Fest, so I will remove myself from this discussion. Obviously, I can still hear you, but I'm gonna black my screen so you don't feel I'm sending eyes or influence on anybody. But yeah, I'll declare conflict and step out of this conversation.
Yeah, that's great. Thanks very much, Counselor Clayton. Yeah, if you just turn your video off and microphone off, then for, you've left the virtual room. And we'll go on, Counselor Thiessen?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would move that council approve, one, the allocation of the twenty twenty large-scale tourism grant funding in the amount of seventy-five thousand dollars to the Bear Creek Folk Music Festival, and, two, allocation of the twenty twenty large-scale tourism grant funding in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars to the Grand Prairie Second Annual Buckwild PBR Event, pending receipt of their twenty nineteen financial statements, including financial needs. Thank you.
Okay, thanks very much, Counselor Thiessen. Open for discussion debate, I see Counselor O'Toole. Counselor O'Toole?
I was hoping that we could get this motion split in two?
Sure, absolutely. There are two distinct parts to the motion, we can by all means split them. So we'll first discuss and debate the first motion, which was with respect to the Bear Creek Folk Music Festival. So council, we're discussing the first part of this, and we'll vote on that separately from the second part. So with respect to the Bear Creek Folk Fest, I see Counselor Palat.
Thanks, Mayor Given. If I could just maybe get an update from administration, just reminding me, if we were to fund both of these, how do we safeguard and ensure that the funding is okay? We talked, you know, we had Sarah explain earlier that she's personally, you know, gonna look after this, and she's confident it's gonna move forward. I'm just curious what would happen if we gave them the seventy-five thousand dollars and asked that there was no Folk Festival this year? How do we safeguard the community, or what's the normal protocol on that?
Okay, I see we've been joined by Ms. Beberdorf, Katie?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Given. We have drafted a funding agreement for both of these events, so we can put in clauses on the financial side of things. And then there also is a force majeure clause that indicates pandemic, so we can have controls in place on our end on the agreement side.
Okay, so just so I understand, Ms. Beberdorf, you're saying we can? Is that something we will do, or would you need council direction on that? I'm not sure if that's normal protocol, or will you maybe explain that to me, please?
Ms. Beberdorf?
Sure, thank you, Mayor Given. We intend on moving forward with the agreement, by the way.
Sorry, just to be clear, Katie, will you institute those clauses? Or Counselor Palat's question is, does council need to make a motion to do that, or will you do it anyways?
Thank you, the intention was to do the agreement anyway.
Okay, with, with the inclusion of those sort of controls?
Yes, correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions on first portion here? I see Counselor O'Toole and then Counselor Friesen?
A question for Katie as well. Is there, do we have a drop date, a date that you have included on that obligation?
Ms. Beberdorf?
Thank you, Mayor Given. A date, you mean as far as when we defer the funds, or?
Yes. Yes. Yes.
As of, as of right now, we don't have a date on there, but as soon as we can get the contract turned around and signed, we could issue the check just in a second.
Okay. I'm just concerned that, uh, so here's my concern. I, I don't really feel that this is gonna go this year just because of the possibility of, uh, another wave of this flu going through. There's a lot of uncertainty. I, I'm very proud of the, the stuff that Grand Prairie is doing and the province of Grand, Alberta is doing. Uh, I'm really a true believer that we're ahead of everybody else, but, uh, my concern is I think that this is gonna be money handed to them and they're not gonna be able to use it until next year. And, uh, I think the Buckwild one, on a different note, is it's gonna be held later on in the year and, uh, I'm okay with, uh, I guess we're, we're guessing that the, uh, situation will be geared up by them. So I'm, I'm not necessarily in favor of supporting the Folk Festival by writing them a check this year, but I, I can see there's a possibility for the Buckwild event. So, just my concerns.
Okay, thanks, Counsel O'Toole. So next I had Counsel Friesen, Blackburn, Thiessen and Bressi. Counsel Friesen?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I, um, Ms. Beberdorf, can it, can the agreement be done in such a way? Um, I, what I heard very clearly from the delegation was that the funds that are used this year and, and fairly immediately as, as they are needed to, um, secure the agreements with some of the performers, but what I heard from her was that there is a force measure in the contract with them such that they would get the money back should this year's, uh, festival not go. But I also heard from her very clearly that they would hope to, rather than get the money back, take the contract forward into 2021 and in fact, she mentioned changing the wording of that agreement to funding the fifth festival, not the 2020 festival. So what I hear from that is that we are funding the next festival, not necessarily, whether, whether it goes forward this year, the money is well spent in securing performers for the next festival and that no, no loss would be, um, realized in what she's planning to use the funding for. So what I would want is assurance that if we go ahead with this today, that your agreement would not preclude the opportunity of using the funding to help out with the next year if it doesn't go this year. Um, does that make sense and will the agreement allow for that?
Ms. Beberdorf?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Yes, we can word the agreement so that it indicates that it's the funds there to be utilized for the fifth, um, year of the festival if that's how the motion needs. Excellent, thank you.
Okay, thanks very much, Counsel Blackburn.
Thank you, Mayor Given. Counsel Friesen asked my question and I'm satisfied with the answer we got.
Okay, thanks very much, Counsel Blackburn. Counsel Thiessen and then Counsel Bressi?
Uh, similarly, Counsel Friesen also asked the, the question that I was going to ask. I'll just, uh, make a, make a quick comment. Um, I'm not, uh, and I stated this at committee, I'm not in any way concerned about how this, this money's gonna be used. Being in the festival industry myself prior to being on council, I understand, uh, the upfront money nature of securing acts and, uh, ensuring that you have an opportunity for the best potential show you can give possibly. Um, I don't see this as if the, if the force measure happens and they're, they're forced to cancel their, their 2020 festival to put it off, their fifth festival until 2021. I just see that as more opportunity, as Ms. Card has stated, uh, for other organizations and new events such as the Buckwild, uh, uh, rodeo stomped, the bull riding competition to get more funding as well, so gives an opportunity for one of our, our applicants, uh, the stomped to potentially reapply for funding and receive that next year as well, as well as any new event that we're not aware of. So, um, in a sense, I kinda look at this money as an investment in our community and bringing people together and sooner or later, once this COVID is done, we're going to need to go out of our way to bring our community together to be strong, uh, to be vibrant and to be healthy and, uh, to stimulate our economy. So the, the more investments like this that we can make with a bit of foresight, uh, I think is, uh, is a down payment well made. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Counsel Thiessen. Counsel Bressi?
Great, thank you. Just my comment was I hope that council, council will support this in terms of is it likely to run this summer or not? I really don't know. I'd actually, I'm nowhere near an expert. I'd actually suggest that Bear Creek Folk Fest is actually probably more likely to run than Buckwild, according to my understanding of what we might be seeing over the next, over the next year. But I really don't know that. I am very confident if it doesn't run in 2020, it will run in 2021 and we need to be investing in that. We need to be investing in that because more than ever, we need something that gives people a reason to love their summers at Grand Prairie if they can't afford to travel away from Grand Prairie anymore. More than ever, we need something that draws the community together for social, social inclusion and more than ever, I think we need something that will inject money into our hospitality industry. So I think whether it's 2020 or whether it's 2021, that's an important investment. Something else I would just highlight to council is that this is a, we're talking about a slight decrease for Bear Creek Folk Fest this year over last and we're talking about a 50% or sorry, a slight decrease this year over last and we're talking about a 50% decrease of this total funding pool. Last year, we budgeted $200,000 for it. This year, we're only talking about $100,000 worth of disperse, disbursement. So we've cut this funding significantly, so I'd encourage council to support the disbursement of the 50% funding that we did budget for.
Okay, thanks, Counsel Bressi. Any other discussion or debate? I don't see anybody raising their hands, uh, so then I will call for the vote on the first part of the motion, which was to award, uh, 2020 large-scale tourism grant funding in the amount of $75,000 to the Bear Creek Folk Music Festival. Uh, we'll call for the vote. All in favor? Thank you. That motion carries unanimously, I think. Um, and then we'll move on to the second part of the motion, the allocation of, uh, $25,000 to the Grand Prairie Buckwild PBR Event, uh, again pending receipt of the 2019 financial statements indicating financial need. Is there any discussion or debate on that motion? Counsel Thiessen?
Uh, thank you very much, Mayor Given. I have high hopes that, uh, that the organizers of this event will come back and, and provide the financial statements that will allow them to access this type of funding. Uh, this is kinda why we're, we were built or why we built this, this large-scale tourism grant fund is to ensure that, uh, new events have a chance to, uh, reach out to the world at large and bring them into our own community. Uh, so any opportunity that we have to give an upcoming event, whether you're into bull riding or not, uh, I've been to a few of those shows, uh, I've always found them quite fun and entertaining, uh, and according to what we were provided, uh, at our, at our meeting, uh, it looked like it was a fairly well-attended and successful event as well. So, um, my hope is, is that they will come in and, and make that financial statement proof, uh, and that, uh, they'll have a glorious event. So I would encourage council to support this. Thank you.
Thanks, Counsel Thiessen. Any other discussion or debate on this motion? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. All in favor? Thank you. That motion carries unanimously, I believe, um, and I think that concludes all of our business on item 8.1.2. Thanks very much, Ms. Beberdorf. Uh, Counsel Blackburn, did you have something arising?
Uh, yes, I, I'm wondering whether, uh, I wanna make another motion regarding the, uh, fest, the Bear Creek Folk Festival. I wonder if it's more appropriate now or at the time that we deal with the, uh, the delegations.
Suppose it depends on what your motion is, Counsel Blackburn?
It has to do with the timing for the payment.
Uh, well, so we're talking about funding now and so I think now would be an appropriate time?
Okay, thank you. Then I would like to make a motion that the, uh, the city provide the large-scale tourism event grant to the Bear Creek Folk Festival as soon as practical and, um, to allow them to apply it to their fifth festival regardless of whether it is in 2020 or 2021. And speaking to the motion, I think that, uh, that Ms. Card made it very clear how important it is for them to have the, uh, the funding that they need in order to be able to secure artists so that their festival can be successful.
Okay, thanks very much, Counsel Blackburn. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Counsel Thiessen?
Uh, thank you very much, Mayor Given. Just a question for Ms. Beberdorf. Uh, this, uh, I'm in support of Counsel Blackburn's motions, of course, but, uh, it might be a bit redundant. Uh, in regards to putting together the large-scale tourism contracts, uh, for event promoters, uh, you did say that you would get that out to them and the funding would go upon signed agreement. How long does that typically take in a, in the process to put together a contract and have them sign and, and then get the money out to them?
Ms. Beberdorf?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Uh, we already have a draft contract ready to go. We just have to put the details in around the financial component and then we can send it off to, um, Ms. Card for signing as soon as possible and then get it signed on our end and if we get her to fill out an EFT form as well, we can deposit it into her bank account probably within a week or two.
Okay, yep. Um, I, I guess with the, that sort of information, I think, uh, Ms. Beberdorf heard, uh, all the conversation in the council and then around this event and the potential for, for postponing to 2021 event. Uh, I'm not gonna speak against this motion because I will support it, uh, but it sounds like it's going along that route anyways, um, and I have, I have confidence in that. Um, but I'll support this motion for now. I just wanted that clarity to ensure, but I, I have full confidence that that money will come as soon as possible.
Okay, thanks, Counsel Thiessen. Any other discussion or debate before I go to Counsel Blackburn to close on his motion? Um, I'll just say that I'll, I will be voting, uh, in opposition to the motion, uh, not because I don't support the concept, but, uh, because I think, as Counsel Thiessen highlighted, I think it is a bit redundant. I think administration, um, uh, deals with matters that are approved by council in as timely a matter as practical, uh, in any case, without us having to say so. Uh, I don't know why we'd have to say so in, in this case and not in any others. Um, and I think that, uh, I'm pretty confident, uh, and I think it was clear that council, um, and administration are on the same page about the intent of the funding being for the next Bear Creek Folk Festival, whether that happens this year or next. So I'm, I'm confident that it's gonna happen either way, um, and I would prefer just to make the funding announcement, or sorry, the funding decision and allow administration to do the implementation as they described. Uh, any other discussion or debate? Counselor Blackburn to close?
Thank you. Um, I, I made this motion to preempt any motions to the contrary because I knew there had been some discussion, um, both at Committee of the Hall and a little bit of a hint of it here at today's meeting, uh, to ensure that, um, I wanted to ensure that we, we didn't end up getting into a debate about hanging on to the money for any particular length of time. So given the information that we have, I would be prepared to withdraw the motion.
Okay, okay, thanks very much, Counsel Blackburn. So Counsel Blackburn is gonna withdraw that motion, um, and so council can allow that and I don't see any council members objecting. Uh, so we'll move on then to item 8.1.3, um, and that's the amendment to the downtown BRZ bylaw. Um, my understanding is this is essentially a technical amendment. Uh, Counsel Thiessen, would you care to give us first reading and then we could, uh, have some support from administration if we needed one second?
Yeah, definitely, uh, Mayor Given. Uh, being the downtown association rep, I think it's only appropriate. So I would move that council give first reading to bylaw C-801F being an amendment to the downtown business revitalization zone bylaw.
Thanks very much, Counsel Thiessen. No discussion or debate on first reading. I'll call for the vote. All in favor? Thank you. That motion carries unanimously. Counsel Thiessen?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would move that council give second reading to bylaw C-801M.
Thanks very much, Counsel Thiessen. Any discussion or debate? Um, my recollection is that this was essentially changing the terminology within the bylaw to, uh, be in alignment with the changes the provincial government made to some, uh, regulations in the municipal government act. Mr. Bork, is that correct?
Uh, that is correct. This just makes us in compliance with the municipal government act.
Thanks very much. Uh, any, uh, discussion or debate? Counsel Bressi? But your hardwired microphone, gotcha.
You can leave it off.
No, my, that time my hardwire one was off and my software one was muted. Too many buttons. It was, um, a question for administration. For this and the other tax bylaws we're talking about today, is there any MGA required advertisement that happens with the bylaws we're talking specifically this afternoon?
Mr. Bork?
Uh, I can speak to, uh, the ones, uh, this portion of the agenda and, uh, there was no requirements, uh, for these that I'm aware of.
Great, thank you. Thank you. Any other discussion or debate? Seeing none, then I will call for the vote. Uh, there we go, there he is. I was wondering.
Sorry, I had to blow my nose. I had to blow my nose.
Please, find and do it on screen, I think, just as long as you turn off the microphone.
No, 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 I just Kleenex, all that stuff. You don't wanna see that.
Okay, uh, thanks. So I'll call for the vote on second reading. All in favor? Thank you. Uh, that motion carries unanimously. Um, Counsel Thiessen?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would move that council have third reading of bylaw C-801F at this meeting.
Okay, thanks very much, Counsel Thiessen. Any discussion or debate on the merits of having third and final reading here this afternoon? I don't see anybody, uh, raising their hand, so then I will call for the vote on the motion to have third and final reading. All in favor? Thank you. That motion carries unanimously. Uh, Counsel Thiessen?
All right, let's finish this off. I would move that council give third reading to bylaw C-801F being an amendment to the downtown business revitalization zone bylaw.
Okay, thanks very much, Counsel Thiessen. Any discussion or debate on third and final reading? Again, seeing none, I will call for the vote. All in favor? Thank you. That motion carries unanimously, um, and we can carry on to item 8.4.1. Uh, we have, uh, a collection of bylaws related to the 2020 business improvement area assessment and tax bylaws. Uh, who would like to start? Uh, we'll, we'll start first with bylaw C-1415. Counsel Thiessen?
All right, thank you very much, Mayor Given. I would move that council give first reading to bylaw C-1415 being the business tax and assessment 2020 bylaw. Would you like me to?
Uh, thanks very much, Counsel Thiessen. Well, we'll have a, we'll have a, the motion for first reading called, or the vote on that and then we'll, uh, a little bit of discussion on second. So I'll call for the vote on first reading. All in favor? Thank you. That motion carries unanimously. Counsel Thiessen?
Well, thank you very much, Mayor Given. I would move that council give second reading to bylaw C-1415. Uh, just speaking to this motion, this, uh, sets the rate for the tax assessment of our central core area and the business, uh, in the BIA, the central BIA area. It actually, uh, allows them to have a budget and to operate businesses as usual, so I would, uh, encourage council to, uh, support this motion.
Okay, thanks very much, Counsel Thiessen. Uh, any discussion or debate on second reading? Seeing none, then I will call for the vote. All in favor? Thank you. That motion carries unanimously. Counsel Thiessen?
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. I would move, uh, that council have third reading of bylaw C-1415 at this meeting.
Okay, thanks very much, Counsel Thiessen. So again, this is a motion to have third and final reading, must pass unanimously, otherwise it comes back in our next council meeting. Any discussion or debate on that point? Seeing none, then I will call for the vote. All in favor? Okay, that motion carries. Thank you. And it carries unanimously. Counsel Thiessen?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would move that council give third reading to bylaw C-1415 being the business tax and assessment 2020 bylaw.
Okay, thanks very much, Counsel Thiessen. Uh, last opportunity for any discussion or debate. Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor? Thank you. I think that, as well, uh, and, uh, we can also give you a break, Counsel Thiessen, if anybody had care of the, uh, motions related to bylaw C-1416.
I don't mind either way. I can talk all day, as you all know.
Well, go ahead, Counselor Theeson. It looks like you're up.
All right, I would move that council give first reading to bylaw C-1416, being the downtown business improvement area business tax 2020 bylaw.
Thanks very much, Counselor Theeson. A motion for first reading, no discussion or debate, so I will call for the vote. All in favor? And I'm just missing Counselor Blackburn on my screen. Counselor Blackburn, are you there? Okay, so we'll record that Counselor Blackburn may have left the council chambers for this vote, and so we'll record that as unanimous for the council members that were there in attendance. Counselor Theeson will move on to second reading.
All right, thank you very much, Mayor Given. I would move that council give second reading to bylaw C-1416.
Okay, thanks very much, Counselor Theeson. We'll call for the vote on, or sorry, any discussion or debate on second reading? Seeing none, oh, Counselor Clayton?
No, sorry, I was just waiting to vote.
Thanks very much, Counselor Clayton. Then we'll call for the vote on second reading. All in favor? Thank you. That motion carries unanimously. Counselor Theeson.
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. I would move that council have third reading of bylaw C-1416 at this meeting.
Okay, thanks very much, Counselor Theeson. Any discussion or debate on the motion to have third and final reading? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. All in favor? That motion does pass unanimously, so we can move on to third and final reading. Counselor Theeson.
Well, thank you very much, Your Grace. I said grace. I would move that council give third reading to bylaw C-1416, being the downtown business improvement area business tax 2020 bylaw.
Thanks very much, Counselor Theeson. Any discussion or debate on third and final reading? Again, seeing none, I will very gracefully call for the vote. All in favor?
Thank you.
That motion carries unanimously. I think that handles everything with 1416, and finally, we have to move on to 1417. Counselor Theeson, you might as well.
Yeah, okay, let's do it. All right, I would move that council give first reading to bylaw C-1417, being the downtown business improvement area business tax rate 2020 bylaw.
Motion for first reading, no discussion or debate. I'll call for the vote. Please vote. All in favor? Thank you. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor Theeson.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would move that council give second reading to bylaw C-1417.
Okay. Thanks, Counselor Theeson. Any discussion or debate on bylaw C-1417? I guess I would just speak to this very briefly to say that this is exactly the question that council is asking of the Downtown Association, whether their budget, which was what would drive the tax rate, still stands. As we heard earlier today, the association has reviewed and sees that they will still have a need for this amount of money as they go through, and potentially even more, although they may shift priorities within their budget. So I'm fully supportive and would encourage council to support the motion. I don't see anybody else moving like they wanted to say anything. Then I'll call for the vote on second reading. All in favor? Thank you. That looks unanimous again. Counselor Theeson.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would move that council have third reading of bylaw C-1417 at this meeting.
Okay, thanks very much, Counselor Theeson. Any discussion or debate on the merits of having third and final reading this afternoon? Seeing nobody moving to catch my attention, then I will call for the vote on the motion to have third and final reading. All in favor? Thank you. That motion passes unanimously. Counselor Theeson.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would move that council give third reading to bylaw C-1417, being the downtown business improvement area business tax rate 2020 bylaw.
Okay, thanks very much, Counselor Theeson. Last opportunity, any discussion or debate on this bylaw? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Please vote. All in favor? That motion carries, and I think that deals with all of our bylaws related to the Downtown Association business tax rate and bylaws. Then we'll move on next to item 8.1.5, bylaw C-1418 and C-1419. Could I have a motion starting with C-1418? Counselor Minhaas.
Thank you, Bill, Mayor Given. I give the council give the first reading to bylaw C-1418, being the supplementary property assessment bylaw.
Okay. Thanks very much, Counselor Minhaas. So no discussion or debate on first reading. I'll call for the vote. All in favor? That motion carries. Counselor Minhaas, go ahead.
I give the council give the second reading to bylaw C-1418.
Okay, thanks very much, Counselor Minhaas. Any discussion or debate on bylaw C-1418? Counselor Palat.
Thanks, Mayor Given. I'd just like to, making a supplementary motion coming over this, of these most recommendations on this line, if I just wait till the end of these being passed, make that motion, or...
So, is your intention to make any changes to these for this year, or is it something that sort of arises out of this discussion?
Arises out of this discussion.
Sure. Yeah, so my recommendation would be after the, if council passes both bylaws, or after council deals with both bylaws, however council deals, not to prejudge how we're all going to vote, but then at the conclusion of the discussion on 1419 would be the right time.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, I don't see anybody else. Then we'll call for the vote on, we were on second, right? Somebody remind me? We're on the second? So we'll call for the vote on second reading of bylaw C-1418. All in favor? Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor Minhaas.
Can I have third reading of bylaw C-1418 at this meeting?
Okay, thanks very much, Counselor Minhaas. So a motion to have third and final reading here this afternoon. Any discussion or debate on that point? Seeing none, then I will call for the vote on the motion. All in favor? Thank you. That motion carries unanimously. Counselor Minhaas, we can have that third and final reading.
Yeah, she asked council give the third reading bylaw C-1418, being as supplementary property assessment bylaw.
Okay, thanks very much, Counselor Minhaas. Any discussion or debate on third and final reading? Again, seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor? Thank you. That motion carries. And Counselor Minhaas, did you want to carry on with 1419?
Yes, I can. So give the first reading to the bylaw C-1419, being the supplementary property tax bylaw.
Okay. Thanks very much, Counselor Minhaas. No discussion or debate on first reading. I will call for the vote. All in favor? Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor Minhaas.
Give the second reading to, to the C-1419 bylaw.
Okay, okay, thanks very much, Counselor Minhaas. Any discussion or debate on second reading of bylaw C-1419, the supplementary property tax bylaw? Seeing none, I just make the observation that was shared with us at the committee meeting that this is potentially one of the last times that we'll have to do this. In my entire career in council, it has been this seemingly redundant thing that we've done every year with all these readings, and the government has amended the municipal government act to allow a municipality to pass a bylaw to do this that would enable us to do it on an ongoing basis rather than having to do it on a reoccurring basis every year. So that'll be good news, and we'll have fewer of these motions in the future. I don't see anybody else making a motion to say anything, so then I will call for the vote. Please vote. All in favor? That motion carries unanimously. Counselor Minhaas.
Have the third reading bylaw C-1419 at this meeting.
Okay, thanks very much, Counselor Minhaas. This is a motion to have third and final reading. Is there any discussion or debate on the merits of that point? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. All in favor? Thank you. That motion does carry unanimously. Counselor Minhaas.
I ask council to give the third reading by, to bylaw C-1419, being supplementary property tax bylaw.
Okay, thanks very much, Counselor Minhaas. Last opportunity, third and final reading. Any discussion or debate? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. All in favor? Thanks very much. That looks like that carried unanimously, and I believe that deals with all of our business related to the supplementary property tax assessment and tax bylaws. Our next item, oh, sorry, Counselor Palat, you said you had business arising. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor Given. And later that we may not have to pass this moving forward, and I know I've brought this up in a couple of conversations, we've had a close vote on this at another point, but I do think it's important for the city to look at this supplementary and breaking it into buckets a little bit more detail. I think this is great information for economic development, and I think, you know, I'm not saying for 2020, I'm saying 2021 that we should start getting this information. So I'm not sure if I need a motion, or if this is asking administration to look at doing this in subsequent years moving forward, or how you think that would be best served.
Sure, and maybe, so that was at our, although many of us were there, the public may not have been, what information was it that you're looking for, Counselor Palat? You might just want to highlight.
Yeah, thanks for giving your correct on that. So currently, we just kind of break it into residential, non-residential, and I guess for me, I think it's imperative that we start breaking this into more detail, so we know how much absorption we're having, commercial, office, industrial, multifamily, single-family. I think this is good information for economic development to have moving forward. I think it's information we can collect if we start putting our collective heads through between when we apply and how taxation separates them. I know it seems like it might be redundant for some people, but at the end of the day, this is vital, important information that we should have for economic development. So when we go to try to sell our community to people at conferences, we have relevant information on what's happening currently in our economy, as right now, we don't have that. So for me, I just think, I'd like to see administration work on this moving forward because we may not even have this reported to council moving forward, and I think it's important that internally, this information is at least being updated and shared with CLT.
Okay, so maybe, I think we may have Director Glavine on the line with us, and Brian, I hope you could speak to what information we have available today, or what the process would be to gather the kind of information that Counselor Palat is asking for. Director Glavine, are you on the council, keep saying call, it doesn't seem quite right, but Director Glavine?
Yes, I'm here. So I think we can come up with most of the information that Counselor Palat was requesting. I have already asked Economic Development to look into the request stemming out of the last meeting, even though it didn't carry, and I haven't got the final report back, but this is all information that we would either have access to, that would be put into a report, or we would need to allocate one of our staff resources to get that information. So it's all doable.
Okay. So based on that, so Director Glavine, would you, would your intent then be to bring that sort of report or your recommendation on how council, you know, what information exists or how best to gather it to committee meeting?
That's certainly something that we can do.
Okay.
As far as the exact dates, it'll take a bit of time to put that together, but certainly sometime later this year, that would be within our wheelhouse.
Okay, and I guess, when you say within our wheelhouse, to bring forward a recommendation or a review, sorry, a recommendation to council on how extensive that would be to take the, undertake the data gathering, or what's possible, or to actually, are you saying that later this year, you could actually bring the data?
Yeah, I'm confident we can bring the data.
Okay, okay, vote meeting, okay. Okay, does that satisfy it?
For me, I don't want administration to any extra work or reports if it's already in works, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay, okay, thanks very much, Counselor Palat. Thanks very much, Director Glavine, for being available. Okay?
If I may add, Bill?
Yes.
For Mayor Given. Yeah, so I'm still waiting just to hear back confirmation on everything from our manager, but yeah, from what I've heard so far, I think we're in good shape to be able to put something together.
Okay, okay, thanks very much, Director Glavine. Then I think that handles all of our items of business coming from our council committee to the whole meeting. We did have one item of correspondence under 9.1 from the Downtown Association. I think that was referenced by Ms. Bosch in her presentation and was related specifically to the Downtown Association budget, so I'd look for a motion to receive that for information. Counselor O'Toole?
Mayor Given, I would, I would go ahead and make a motion to accept that letter as pre-information.
Thanks very much, Counselor O'Toole. Any discussion or debate on that point? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. All in favor? Okay, that motion carries unanimously. And then delegation business, we did have two delegations. We could receive them both for information with one motion, probably. Counselor Blackburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would move that we accept the delegation reports as information.
Thanks very much, Counselor Blackburn. Any discussion or debate on the motion? And seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. All in favor? Thank you. That motion carries. And so that handles our delegation business. We have no notice of the motion this evening or this afternoon, and so with that, we will recess our council meeting. We are going to return later on this evening at 6:00 PM for public hearings and scheduled delegations. I don't believe we have any scheduled delegations, but we do have a couple of items under public hearings, and we will return to our webcast and to our laptops for 6:00 PM, and we'll see you all in a little bit. Counselor Blackburn, sorry, did you have any to add for vote?
Just a technical question to make sure that we don't end up with a problem. Are we able to re-attend this same meeting using the same link that showed up in our invitation?
I would suspect so, but I'll look to Mr. Bork just to make sure.
Correct. You can log out and re-log in closer to 6 o'clock with the same link.
Thank you.
Great, thanks, Mr. Bork. Thanks, Counselor Blackburn. Okay, then we are in recess. We will see you at 6 o'clock. Bye, everybody. Bye, everybody.
For three, two, one. Okay, and we should be back to the second half of our Grand Prairie City Council meeting for Monday, April the sixth. We are back after our committee business in the early afternoon here for scheduled delegations. And I'll look to the clerk, I don't believe we have any scheduled delegations this evening, do we? Arlene, I think you had it backwards. I think you had your mic on before and turned it off.
Thank you, Mayor Given. What would I do without you? At this time, we do not have any scheduled delegations for this city council meeting.
Okay, okay, great. Thanks very much. Thanks for that, Arlene. I'm sorry to put you on the spot so early. So we'll...
Sorry, and I've got a point of order, Mayor Given.
Sure, Council Bressi, just before we move out of the scheduled delegations, I just wanted to note to the community, we do have some public hearings that were previously advertised. And in order to ensure that we followed up with the advertising commitment that people would be able to attend at City Hall and speak to any of the public hearings, our administration has gone ahead and set up a Zoom station in the lobby at City Hall. So if there was anybody that was planning to attend and speak to these and had been planning to attend at City Hall, they can do that. Administration will be there to support them and bring them into the appropriate public hearing at the appropriate time. So that's completely possible. And before we get into our public hearings, I'll recognize Council Bressi.
Great, thank you, Mayor Given. A bit of background for Council, and then I've got a question for Administration on a point of order. Last week, Minister Madhu, the Minister of Municipal Affairs, signed a ministerial order which pushed most timelines in the MGA back to October 1st. And it's going to create all kinds of havoc if it doesn't get rescinded. For example, my understanding is if development is subject to an SDAB comes up, then it can't go forward until October 1st. It's causing issues with tax assessments. Appeals go to October 1st. It's creating all sorts of issues. But one of the ways that I'm reading it is anything that requires advertisements under the MGA, the timelines are extended to October 1st. And since public hearings are something that require advertisement under the MGA, I guess my two questions are, is there potential that now any public hearing we can't hold until October 1st? And my second question to the clerk is, do we get off scot-free on this week? Because we started advertising before that ministerial order was signed. I'm just wondering if we can go forward tonight in light of this very broad ministerial order that got signed.
Okay, I'm not muted. I can answer this question. I did connect with Municipal Affairs this afternoon with regard to the issues that Council Bressi has brought to our attention. He is correct that Sections 606 Subsection 2 and 606 Subsection 5 are referenced in appendix to the ministerial order that was signed on March 25th. We are fortunate that the public hearings that are going to occur at our council meeting this afternoon were advertised prior to this order. And therefore Municipal Affairs has confirmed that we can go ahead with these public hearings as scheduled. I have to do some more research into further public hearings and how the municipal order is going to affect what we do moving forward.
I'm over. Go ahead, thank you.
Great, thanks, Council Bressi, and thanks for raising that. Obviously, uncertain times for everybody. And I know the provincial government is trying to move fairly rapidly to adjust timelines where necessary in municipalities. And I think some of those quick adjustments might have unintended consequences that they're looking to rectify. So, thanks very much, and thanks, Arlene, for that clarification. So, we will move on and call to order the public hearing for land use bylaw amendments, C-126111 and C-126116, social housing definitions. I'd call this public hearing to order. And look to Mr. Deroche for an introduction from administration. Reed.
Thank you, Mayor Given. Sorry, I'm just answering my proper presentation here. Can you please confirm that you're able to hear me and can see the presentation?
Yes, I can. Yep.
Okay, thank you. So, this public hearing is on definitions in the land use bylaw related to social types of housing. So in this context, when we say social housing, we're referring to forms of housing that are intended to serve a social benefit and other affiliated uses. So, the initiation of this project came about in several ways. When development officers as well as committee were processing applications for some of these uses, notably group homes, they noticed some challenges with interpreting the current definition and a lot of areas of confusion. Also, while administration was developing the draft affordable housing strategy, the engagement identified a lot of confusion about our existing definitions. And so, we received direction from committee to conduct a review. The review included going over definitions in bylaws from other municipalities, as well as reviewing older versions of the city's land use bylaw. It resulted in some proposed changes to definitions, as well as the addition of some new definitions to the bylaw. Based on those revisions, we presented a draft to committee. We received some feedback and received direction to move forward with bylaws for council consideration. And that's what I'm presenting to you tonight. So, the proposed changes were separated into two distinct bylaws, each addressing a different aspect of the land use bylaw. And this is simply to facilitate debate of the different items and making it easier for any motions arising. So the first one is 111, and that deals solely with the definitions. And 116 deals with proposed changes to permitted or discretionary status of various uses. Throughout the new definitions, there have been some updates to the terminology. For those of you who are committee, you may remember that there were some challenges with properly identifying the user groups that were intended for the different types of facilities. In our review of the older versions of the bylaw, one challenge we found is that group home referred to personal rehabilitation for mental, social, or behavioral problems. And that was removed in the newer version of the land use bylaw, likely because it's an outdated terminology. So to clarify the intended user group, we are going to, we're proposing to use the term behavioral health. And this refers to mental health and behaviors related to health outcomes. So this can include things such as challenges with depression, anger management, social reintegration, and addictions. And this will help distinguish between the different types of support homes. Similarly, we updated terminology related to certain user groups to focus more on the nature of their needs that would impact facility operations or design. So, in the current definitions, the terms that we're kind of replacing are seniors and persons with developmental disabilities. These definitions were slightly too narrow to accomplish what we were looking for. So one example that came up was a case where perhaps someone has cognitive disabilities due to something like a motor vehicle accident. Then they wouldn't be covered under these definitions. And so, we are proposing to use a terminology that focuses on their needs. So, the updated terminology is residents who have physical or cognitive health issues and who require daily or frequent professional care and supervision to perform daily living tasks or to exit safely in the case of an emergency. And so, these will appear in a few different definitions. The result of the revision was six revised definitions and two proposed new definitions. So the first revised definition is community outreach facility. And the challenge we had with community outreach facility is that the current definition is far too broad. It includes things such as walk-in counseling services, all the way to permanent supported housing or emergency shelters. And these are very different types of uses in terms of land use impact and potential hours of operation, need for support, traffic, and that type of thing. So the revised definition focuses on the kind of daytime support services that are outpatient and walk-in and that type of item. And it eliminates any element of overnight accommodation or temporary housing or residential uses. However, we've also proposed a clause in there that would allow these facilities to be used as overflow in the event of an emergency that renders our existing shelters over capacity. So what that's referring to is in, say, our harsh winter conditions when it's minus forty and rotary house is full, potentially one of these facilities could be utilized for emergency overflow. And so we put that clause in there just so that we had the opportunity to do that in the event of an emergency. The next revised definition is dwelling unit supported. And this definition causes quite a bit, the current definition causes quite a bit of confusion, mainly because it was created to address a very unique case. And so this is utilized in circumstances where someone is building a mixed market project. So that's a building that concludes regular market units as well as specialized supported housing. And on top of that, where the applicant is seeking special considerations based on that. So, an example scenario might be if someone's building an apartment building and they want to designate a portion of the residences as affordable housing, they may ask to have their parking limit reduced, parking requirement reduced in consideration of serving a population that's less likely to drive. And it would also trigger considerations such as proximity to transit and other services, depending on the nature of the actual development. So this allows for these unique products to be considered. Another point of confusion was that this use was written in conjunction with the creation of the DC-14 district. So this is a direct control district, but was written to be potentially applied to different sites throughout the city for similar circumstances like this. And its main function is highlighting the actual approval process. And so, the current definition does not make any mention of DC-14. It simply says that a direct control district is required. So the proposed revision makes specific mention of DC-14 so that anyone reading this use knows to refer to that district to get a better understanding of the context and the applicability of the use. The next one is group home. So currently, the definition of group home overlaps with residential support home. And to clearly differentiate between the two, we are proposing that group home focus on behavioral health, while residential support homes be focused on persons who need supports for daily living because of cognitive or physical disability. And so, the proposed new definition clarifies the intent of the group home and clarifies that connection to behavioral health. Now, it also has revised wording to account for different scenarios. These types of facilities can be very different in their services and design. So, we acknowledge that with things such as noting a requirement for licensing. So, we say, it may or may not require licensing, but that'll trigger anyone processing a permit to verify that. Depending on the nature of the facility, they may require provincial license. But they also might not. But then again, the operator themselves might require a license. So, it gets a bit complicated. The wording basically allows for a variety of scenarios. It also accounts for whether or not they provide meals. That's not a requirement. Whereas the current wording suggests that they're required to provide meals, but that's not the intent. And also, a clause was added to acknowledge the potential for staff accommodations. The next revised definition is residential care facility. The main change in this is that the current definition refers to it as potentially being a group home with seven or more residents. And with the focus of group homes on behavioral health, that really is not the intent of a residential care facility. The term residential care facility is typically used for seniors housing. So for the proposed new definition, we clarify the intent by focusing on, again, that updated terminology for persons who require assistance evacuating in an event of an emergency and require daily support due to cognitive or physical disabilities. And then, seniors housing is given as an example use within that to further clarify that. And there is no longer a mention of a group home in the proposed definition. The housing for persons with behavioral health challenges that require a larger facility will be covered under the new permanent supported housing definition. Residential support home was changed to reflect that updated terminology as well. Again, like group homes, the wording around licensing and other characteristics was updated to reflect the variety of different types of facilities that we can have, as well as the potential for staff accommodations. One notable change is that the new definition proposes that a residential support home type one be limited to three residents rather than four. So currently, you can have up to four residents in this type of facility. But residential support home type one does not require a development permit. So, essentially, because it's so similar to a normal residence, and with only three residents, it may fall beyond the scope of what we can define for single-family housing in terms of not being able to define family in a bylaw. So it's simpler just to allow it without requiring a permit. However, four residents is one of the triggers for provincial licensing. And so, we propose that four or more be residential support home type two. And that way, when someone's processing a facility that does require a development permit, they know that it's also likely to require provincial license. So, similarly, we have residential support home type two. Again, the terminology was updated, and the clauses around licensing and other support services and staff accommodations were updated to reflect the variety of potential scenarios. But we're proposing that it applies to four or more residents rather than five or more residents to align with provincial licensing. And one of the new definitions that we are proposing is permanent supported housing. And this is a terminology used by our community social development department, as well as social departments across the country. And so we thought this was the most appropriate terminology, largely because when trying to accommodate this type of facility in Grand Prairie, it was a huge struggle to find what use it would best fall under. The current one in the community was approved as community outreach facility. And as noted at the beginning of this presentation, that use is far too broad. And so, it's very helpful for everyone in the process to have a clear definition to understand what the process will be for developing one of these and where they can be accommodated. So, the new definition addresses a lack of a clear definition for a form of housing that accommodates persons with complex needs, which is covered under the terminology behavioral health. And it describes a secure facility with staff supervision. Now notably, we're proposing that it require a direct control district. This is for several reasons. One is because these types of facilities are often a cause for concern for decent property owners. And the direct control process includes a public engagement requirement that allows measures to address public concerns to be implemented into the actual district, as well as a development permit. It also allows for the development officer, as well as council, to have considerations of the more specific details of the design of the facility. And since everyone is very unique, they can be quite varied in the design, this allows for a greater level of oversight. And then, it also provides more certainty in the process for the applicant because at the zoning stage, council essentially approves the proposed development. And then, when there is a development permit, it limits the opportunities for appeal to procedural grounds. So, another definition that we're proposing to add is emergency shelter. So currently, there isn't a clear definition for emergency shelter. It could potentially fall under community outreach facility, which lists youth emergency shelter as an example use. The current shelter that we have in the community was opened under essential public service, which is a definition that we also use for police departments and fire stations. And so, these are very different uses. And so, it's helpful to have a distinct use for a shelter. Again, this creates greater certainty for people applying to develop one, and people in the community have a clearer term when something's being developed near them. And so, this addresses that lack of a definition. The proposed wording allows for a variety of configurations and services. So, it includes things such as dorms or individual rooms, or even short-term apartments for transitional housing. Again, this one requires a direct control district for the same reason it's being proposed for permanent supported housing. Now, the next component of the presentation will be the potential changes to the permitted or discretionary status of uses. And we're reviewing four uses in this proposed bylaw. So the first one is community outreach facility. And it's being proposed to move from discretionary committee to discretionary development officer. And this is based on the overnight and residential components being eliminated from the definition. Based on a clear, more, less vague definition, we believe that there's less variability that would require triggering a committee process. If there is something that arose that was more complicated, the development officer could bring it to committee. Discretionary development officer still has the added adjacent property owner notification, as well as providing the development officer with an elevated level of discretion to make decisions on the permit outside of some of the specific clauses in the land use bylaw. But it also eliminates some of the administrative process in terms of having to bring a permit to committee and that delay in the potential approval process. Similarly, we're proposing group home to be moved from discretionary committee to discretionary development officer. And that, again, facilitates the process. It reduces the timeline for processing a permit. The development officer still has the requirement to notify adjacent property owners and put the sign on the property, and has that added discretion without the added requirement of the committee process. And also, the definition is clearer now, so it's more straightforward about what's being proposed. Notable changes that have been highlighted on this slide is we're proposing to add group homes to the central commercial district. We're doing this for several of these uses. And that's mainly because the central commercial district, it was likely omitted when these definitions were being added, simply because its name suggests it's commercial strictly. But it has a significant residential component, and it may be an ideal area for some of these uses, notably because it's close to amenities and transit and a lot of public services. So we're proposing to include it in central commercial. Another point that we identified during the review was that it's permitted in the residential transition district, but discretionary in every other residential district. And that seemed inappropriate. There's good reasons why it's discretionary in most districts. There's a very wide range of types of supports that could be provided with a group home. And there's a lot of different contexts that it could be proposed in. And those all need to be considered in a permit. And so, we're proposing that it also be discretionary in the RT district. We also would want to avoid driving all the group homes in the community to RT areas. It would be, it would be preferred to have them more dispersed throughout the community rather than potentially concentrating them in one district. So, we have residential support homes types one and two, both on this slide. So the changes we're proposing is simply adding them to the commercial central district. Again, this is because it is a potentially ideal area for these forms of housing, close to amenities and transit. And so, residential support home type one is permitted wherever it's noted. And so, we're proposing it be permitted in the commercial central district. And type two is discretionary development officer wherever it is noted. And we're proposing that it be discretionary development officer in the central commercial district as well. So in summary, we have proposed some revised definitions to improve clarity and address overly broad things. We're proposing some new definitions to address gaps and cover what overly broad definitions formerly had. And we're proposing some changes to permitted or discretionary status based on some changes or as a result of the review. And administration recommends that both bylaws be given all three readings. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Deroche. Okay, so, an opportunity for any questions for administration at this time from council? Counselor Palat.
Thanks, Mayor Given. Thanks, Reed, for the presentation. I just had a couple of questions. Just one, I think it was under DC-14 where we're gonna potentially have a little bit less parking requirements. little bit less parking requirements. Um, can you explain what would happen if that house where that product was sold later on? There was a apartment building or a fourplex or something that was deemed to have that apartment, uh, parking, and then it was sold, uh, five years down the road? Would that parking stay with title if the new owner wanted to go to market housing and not have any supported housing in it?
Um, thank you, uh, through the mayor. So, um, in that case, they would actually require a new permit for a change of use. Um, so because those units would be specifically designated as dwelling units supported in the development permit, if they were going to make a change, they are technically changing the use of those units. And so they would need a change of use permit.
Okay. Well, that's good to know. I just, uh, um, we'll have to figure out a way to communicate that to the realtors and the homebuyers that might be buying that to know that somehow. Um, just another question was just if, if we approve all the other, uh, the items on the agenda tonight and somebody come in to apply for a DC, would they be even able to do anything till October first then?
Mr. Deroch?
Um, thank you. So through the mayor, w- we're still working on those issues. So I don't have, I, I can't answer that question at this time. We're still trying to get a better understanding of the implications.
Okay.
Counselor Palat, just to speak to that, I think, uh, you know, my understanding, maybe this was covered earlier, but my understanding was that the government realized that, uh, one of the unintended consequences was that, uh, they've just pushed all timelines having to do with municipalities. Um, and in this case, it means that if the municipality issues a development permit, that the, um, a time for appeal, that that appeal needs to stay open, goes all the way to October as well, which would cause a significant amount of, you can imagine, for, for a builder or a project proponent to say, okay, well, I have to wait all the way till October to know whether I'm gonna get appealed or not, um, is a pretty big window. Uh, the ministry has acknowledged that this was not their intention, uh, and they are discussing right now, um, you know, opportunities to improve that. Um, there was an email to AUMA last week, uh, from the department saying that, saying basically that, that they, they get it, uh, and they're gonna try to fix it. I would expect that that will come fairly quickly, but, uh, yeah, it's, uh, so, uh, no an issue, uh, with the change that they made. Um, and, and the real challenge is that if it's left the way it is now, um, anything, any permit issued right now could be subject to appeal all the way to October.
Okay. Thanks, Mayor Given. Thanks, Ree, for that. I did have a couple more questions, but I'll, I'll jump out for now.
Okay, uh, anybody else with any questions, uh, for Mr. Deroch at this stage? Counselor Thiessen?
Uh, thank you very much, Mayor Given. Thanks for the presentation, Ree, and thanks for the hard work that you put into, uh, all these definitions and the reorganization of it. Um, I guess, uh, my question is, uh, in regards to, uh, group home and the new table set as far as who the development authority is. Um, group homes can sort of dive into the, the safe group home bet and then the NIMBY group home bit. Um, so, uh, typically, uh, these types of housings do get a little bit of pushback and are a bit more politically charged. So what was the motivation in, in, uh, making the discretionary authority, uh, uh, administration rather than committee when we could have a lot more pushback from the public over these types of housing units?
Mr. Deroch?
Uh, thank you, uh, through the mayor. Um, so that was part of the reason for the consideration. So the challenge we found with group homes is that a lot of the expressed concerns are about the users and aren't land use considerations that we can apply. And so by going to committee, it potentially creates, um, more confusion a- around what can be considered, um, because then it, it creates kind of a, a public debate over processing the permit, whereas, um, the development officer is still required to consider public input and is able to, um, make those decisions in a less heated environment, um, and can choose to bring them to committee if it's deemed to require that step.
Okay, yeah, no, I got that last part. Thank you very much for that, uh, read, and thanks for the confidence in that process.
Okay, thanks, Counselor Thiessen. Uh, go to Counselor Bressi.
Great, thank you. My question has to do with dwelling units supported. And just, I want to know if I'm reading this definition right. The way I'm reading this definition is if there was a mixed market apartment unit that was a bunch of market units and then there was also X amount of units in it that were subsidized, it wouldn't actually fall into this definition? Is it that it, it wouldn't become a dwelling unit supported unless it was in a DC fourteen land zoning? Or is it that it would be required to go in a DC fourteen zoning? Does that make sense what I'm asking?
Uh, thank you, through the mayor. Yes, so this is a major challenge with that definition. So it is a huge point of confusion and ideally I would have eliminated if I could have, but it serves a very specific niche. So to, to clarify your point, I'm gonna just give some scenarios. So say you have an apartment building, it's already existing, and you want to allow people in who are using a provincial subsidy for their rent. It's a subsidized unit. It does not require a, a permit to be a permanent, uh, a supported y- dwelling unit. Similarly, something in an apartment building could be a resi- residential support home type one, and it would only, it wouldn't require an additional permit. So the utility of dwelling units supported is in a very unique circumstance where someone is requiring special development permit considerations on the grounds of having these units included. And there's only ever been one case of that in the city. I don't expect it to be utilized very often, but it is a, a useful tool in those very unique circumstances.
Great, thank you. Thanks, Counselor Bressi. Any other questions for Mr. Deroch at this time? You'll just have to get your microphone, Counselor Minhaus. We, uh, we can't hear you. And now we can't see you. Okay, Counselor Minhaus will come back to you, uh, when you're able to, if you're able to get your microphone. There you go. Uh, did you still have a question, Counselor Minhaus? And if you do, you're gonna need to turn on your mic. There we go. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Just a clarification for, you know, when you said the three resident to go to four resident and you need the permit, I just didn't quite understand, you know, the development. And then same thing with this number six to go to seven for care center, something. It's, can you explain me a little bit better?
Sure. Through the mayor. So currently, a residential support home type one allows up to four units. Um, but reviewing the provincial licensing requirements, when, um, what they call a group home, but we would potentially call a residential support home, uh, requires a license, one of the triggers is four or more residents. Now, there are, are some other criteria, but it just makes things easier on people considering applications in the city to align our kind of triggers with the provincial licensing ones. Um, so, for example, um, we wouldn't necessarily want to allow, um, residential support home type one to go forward without requiring a permit, um, when they may require provincial licensing, um, simply because, uh, this process allows us to verify that licensing is in place for facilities in our community. So ideally, um, a development permit is required also when a license is required. And so the definitions are changed to align with that. Sorry, I think that was a bit confusing. Did that answer that question?
Counselor Minhaus, you'll just have to get your microphone, Counselor Minhaus.
Yes, I got some understanding now, you know, like you need some license for them for unit before you didn't have it.
Okay, okay. Uh, thanks, Counselor Minhaus. Uh, any other questions for Mr. Deroch at this time? Yeah, Counselor Palat?
Uh, thanks, Mayor Given. Um, just, can you give me an idea, uh, Mr. Deroch, just on the amount of community outreach or group home, uh, applications that would come into the city annually that if we made these changes wouldn't have to come to committee?
I, I don't have the numbers.
So, well, I'd like a couple a year. I, I guess for me, it changes it because if there's only one or two of these a year, maybe three or four, I kind of feel like you should just come to committee. They're, they're, they're very front-facing in the community. And once something's approved, it makes it very difficult to make any changes. So, you know, if I knew there was dozens of these, it would change my opinion maybe. But if this is two or three, four a year, um, I don't know if I'd like to see those not coming to committee. I just think that's something we should do.
And through the mayor, um, my just, um, im- impression from my experience is that it's potentially fewer than five of each a year.
Okay, thank you. And then just, Ree, can you just maybe walk me through the process? Um, so somebody buys a piece of land, they want to put on a permanent supportive housing or emergency shelter, they apply to go to direct control. That would be their first step?
Uh, through the mayor? Yes, so they would apply to go to direct control. That would be the first step.
So as much as, and I don't know a better way to do it, I'm just asking if administration's got, uh, thoughts that I could explain to somebody down the road on. When things are getting moved to direct control, I don't know if there's gonna be a bunch of red flags though, because most people won't know what that means. It's once we move it to direct control and then somebody comes in and says, I want to put an emergency shelter right here, that's three, three, three from your house, sort of a scenario. And that's what I'm worried about is people aren't gonna understand when it gets moved from piece of land to DC, and then they're gonna be too late to try to make changes. And is there any way we can communicate that with the community or is there something we can do when that transfers to DC?
Mr. Deroch? Um, I'm, I'm sorry, I, I'm, I'm not clear on the question. Are you asking, uh, for people who are currently working on these types of projects?
I guess what I'm more, sorry, I, I didn't answer that properly, uh, or ask that properly. Um, I'm more and more dealing with safeguarding the homeowner there, the, the property owner that might be adjacent to this property. We just own it to direct control. Probably don't care because they're like, oh, direct control, and they know what it could be. But if, once it's direct control and then the new applicant comes in and says, actually, I want to put a emergency shelter right beside your property, is there any way they're gonna understand that before? Because I think that's where the, some of the community engagement process might break down on our part is, I don't know if people understand when we move it to direct control and then the applicant comes in. It's gonna impact the land on the recite it? And I'm just trying to understand how we, how we work through that situation.
So through the mayor, that's specifically why we're proposing direct control. So when you're applying for direct control district, you're creating a zone saying exactly what you're going to do on that site. So if your neighbor says, hey, uh, I'm rezoning to develop an emergency shelter, they have to notify you. The DC process has a requirement for public engagement. And that way, um, the reason we put these uses of DC is specifically because of that, so that there's an added notification that there's required communication with adjacent property owners and measures taken to address any concerns that are identified.
Okay, that's perfect. Thanks for the clarification on that. That's appreciated.
Okay, uh, were there any other questions before we get to opening the, uh, public hearing portion of the agenda? Okay, I don't, I don't see anybody else. So, uh, I will, we will open the presentation submission portion of the agenda and ask if there was anyone, uh, who had planned on making a presentation with respect to these two land use bylaw amendments, uh, C twelve sixty one eleven and C twelve sixty one sixteen. Um, for administration, do we know if we have anybody who is intending to speak to either of these amendments? Mr. Bork?
Uh, I'm not aware, and I can confirm that there's, uh, no one at City Hall waiting right now.
Okay, okay, good. Uh, so, uh, we'll just note again, um, administration did make provision if there were members of the public who had intended to speak to these, uh, changes, that, uh, they could have followed the, um, um, public advertising for this to attend at City Hall, um, as was, uh, advertised. Um, we do have that opportunity. And, uh, going forward, as we go through this, um, uh, operating by technology, administration will continue to provide opportunities for the public to attend any public hearings. Um, and so I don't see anybody for presentation submission. Um, I will close the presentation submission portion of the public hearing and we'll move on to business arising. Uh, we'll go to Counselor O'Toole.
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. I, uh, move some motions here. I move the council give first reading to bylaw C dash twelve sixty dash one eleven, being an amendment to the land use bylaw.
Thanks very much, uh, Counselor O'Toole. Uh, obviously, uh, first reading, so no discussion, debate. I will call for the vote on first reading. Please vote, all in favor? Thank you, that motion carries. Counselor O'Toole?
I move that we give second reading to bylaw C dash twelve sixty dash one eleven.
Okay, thanks very much, Counselor O'Toole. So open for discussion and debate on second reading. Counselor Palat?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Um, as I kind of mentioned earlier, I'm not sure I'm comfortable with, uh, I can appreciate what administration's trying to do to take some, some paperwork off our plates and, and come into committees, but I don't know if I'm comfortable with, with community outreach and group homes not coming to committee. I think that there's not a lot of volume of those, uh, for me. I'd like to see those come and maybe review this at a later date. Um, but we're implementing a lot of new stuff here, and I think for me, I'd like to take a pause on that part. Um, so I'm gonna make a motion that we amend it, uh, so that we don't include, uh, sorry, that committees still have the, uh, to come to committee for all community outreach and group home applications.
Okay, um, so, so for those applications, um, in any district? Counselor Palat?
Well, I guess, as, if I was understanding what Mr. Deroch was saying, I, I, I'm not sure which districts it applies to, but it sounds like they're trying to take community outreach and group homes to where it could be a discretionary authority officer. I'd still like those to come to committee.
Sorry, may I provide a point of clarification?
Yeah, please, Mr. Deroch, uh, and you may, uh, we may want to see your screen again so you can show us, um, the tables and, and everything. So go ahead, Mr. Deroch.
Um, so the main thing that I would like to clarify is that one eleven strictly deals with the revised definitions. So voting on one eleven won't impact whether or not it's discretionary development officer or discretionary committee. All those changes are contained in one sixteen. And I did that intentionally because my assumption was that the changes to the definitions would likely be less contentious, but the council may want to, um, may not want to approve the changes to the discretionary status. And so they can do that either through, as amended to one sixteen or by not supporting one sixteen. And they can still approve one eleven and adopt the changes to the definition by themselves.
Thanks, thanks, Mr. Deroch. So, uh, for council, is that, is that clear? So the first one is really just creating the new definitions, changing them, uh, from what the sort of system that was not as clear or precise in the previous land use bylaw. And then under the next, uh, bylaw is actually where we'd get into the deciding what is, uh, will come in front of council and what would just be able to be dealt with by administration. So fair, fair enough? Okay, any other, uh, discussion or, uh, questions or comment on second reading of, um, where are we here? Of twelve sixty dash one eleven? I don't see any hands, and I've, I just can't see Counselor Clayton. Uh, Counselor Clayton, are you still there? Yeah, there you go.
It says my video's on, but you don't see me?
Yeah, yeah, no, it's just it's, uh, the way it's arranging the, the tiles on my screen is, uh, you've been bumped.
Oh, perfect.
It's, it's not because we don't like you.
Yeah, it's okay.
Okay, okay, uh, great, so I don't see anybody else. There we go. We're, I'm rearranging. Uh, you're in now. Uh, okay, so I don't see anybody else, so I'll call for the vote on second reading. All in favor? Thank you, and I think that carries unanimously. Uh, so Counselor O'Toole?
I vote that we have third reading of bylaw C twelve sixty dash one eleven at this meeting.
Okay, thanks very much, Counselor O'Toole. Any discussion or debate on the merits of having third and final reading? Counselor Bressi?
Uh, thank you, thank you, Mayor Given. I'm gonna be voting, voting against this, and the reason for me is that I think we are in unusual times. And I think in unusual times, sometimes it's worthwhile slowing down decision-making a little bit. And for that reason, I'll be voted against third reading, having third reading for this and the next bylaw amendment, not the rest of the night. And I just think that in a time where the public has less capacity to pay attention to what we're doing, when we're talking about something that has the potential to be contentious in the, in the community, as this most certainly is, I think we should give lots and ample opportunity for the public to hear that we're discussing this. What I would absolutely hate to have, and I've already ha- I've already heard some people in the community say, various orders of government are just using this pandemic to ramp things through, which is certainly not the case with us. This is a conversation that is months long. But I think that if people do feel that way, I'd like to be able to say, well, actually, no, we didn't. We intentionally slowed this decision down so that if you weren't paying attention in the midst of it, a pandemic, you'd have more time. And for that reason, I don't think it's, I think these contentious things, we shouldn't go the same speed that we usually go at the time of life we're at right now.
Okay, thanks, Counselor Bressi. Any other discussion or debate on the merits of having third and final reading? I'll see Counselor Blackburn and then Ca- now, Counselor Blackburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Um, I, I appreciate Counselor-
Thank you, Mayor Given. Um, I, I appreciate Counselor Bressi's concerns, especially when we might be dealing with 116. However, I only see 111 as being a series of improvements. And, um, uh, I would, I would like to dispense with them and I'm, I'm hoping that Counselor Bressi would change his mind. Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor Blackburn. Any other discussion or debate on the merits of having third and final reading? Um, I will, uh, I'll say that I, uh, would also encourage Counselor Bressi to consider, I actually will, would agree with you on the second. Uh, on 116, I actually would also vote in opposition of passing that, uh, when it comes to, uh, changing where the public may have input on these. But if we're able to improve the precision of our descriptions, uh, I think that that's something that's a benefit to everyone. And I think that would also aid the conversation, uh, when we go to the public and say, here are the types of things, very specifically, that you, uh, and, and that you will or won't have comment on. And, and where you would be able to have a say. I think that our, it actually aids our discussion if this one passes first. And then we take some time to pass the second one. So, um, yeah, I would, I'd encourage you to continue your point about making sure people get a chance to see it. Um, but also making sure that they know exactly what they're commenting on, because we can say, council approved these definitions. Now where do you think they should be, you know, how, how should the public process of those definitions that have been approved be handled? So, uh, just give, give you that thought, uh, when, before this, uh, vote on whether it's unanimous or not. Any other, uh, discussion or debate on the merits of having third and final reading? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. All in favor? And that motion does carry unanimously. Okay, uh, and then we'll move on to, uh, third and final reading. Counselor O'Toole.
I move that, uh, council gives third reading to bylaw C-1260-111, being an amendment to the land use bylaw.
Thanks very much, Counselor O'Toole. Any discussion or debate on third and final reading? Don't see anybody, uh, making a motion to raise their hand. So then I will call for the vote on third and final reading. All in favor? Great, that motion carries. Thank you very much. And we'll move on to bylaw C-1260-116. Um, Counselor O'Toole, do you want to do that, or?
Sure, I can carry on. It doesn't sound like it's going to go through the way all the way anyhow, but we'll start. I move the council give first reading to bylaw C-1260-116, being an amendment to the land use bylaw.
Okay, thanks very much, Counselor O'Toole. No discussion or debate on first reading, of course, so I'll call for the vote. All in favor? Thank you, that motion carries unanimously. Uh, Counselor O'Toole.
I move that, uh, we give second reading to bylaw C-1260-116.
Okay, thanks very much, Counselor O'Toole. Any discussion or debate on second reading? Counselor Palat.
Thanks, Mayor Given. Now that I'm edumacated on which one I should have been making this amendment on, I'm just wondering if we should be, in light of this not passing, if that's necessary. Or if that's administration will be bringing back to committee when you have a discussion then? Or would this just naturally come back in the present form unless we amend it?
Uh, well, so two different things. Uh, first, uh, it will come back, so assuming that it doesn't pass tonight. And I would agree with Counselor Bressi on this previous point. Yeah, I also won't, or to finish out tonight. Um, so it would come back to our next council meeting. Uh, it won't go back to committee. And, uh, it, unless council takes any specific action to make amendments, um, uh, administration wouldn't be, wouldn't be proposing any. It would count, it would take a motion of council to direct administration to, to make amendments.
Okay, so on that, I would like to make a motion that we, uh, direct this report back to committee. Um, so we can have a commi, a conversation with it as a committee and, and then have it come back to council after that.
So, uh, I'll look to our clerk. I, so we can't, yeah, we can't. So we're in the middle of a public hearing. We've started the public hearing. We can, uh, table consideration or defer, um, and I would look to the clerk on their exact right definition. But we can't, yeah, postpone consideration of second reading. Um, but we can't refer this decision-making down to committee. Um, so if, if the intent Counselor Palat is to, sorry, if, if the intent Counselor Palat is to, um, to make an amendment. I guess my, here's what my suggestion would be. Um, it sounds as though that this will not go through, uh, to third reading tonight. That means that there will be time for additional public consultation and additional time for any council members that might wish to have an amendment. To work with administration to properly frame their amendment. So we could show up for third reading with the benefit of additional public consultation and any public input. And a really well-formed amendment, um, that was specific to what your intention was. So maybe, you know, maybe everybody would benefit from this not being completed tonight.
No, perfect. Thanks for the clarification.
Yep, no, it's, uh, we'll try and get it so that everybody gets a chance to, to have a good debate and a good discussion with exactly what they want. Um, but also putting something sort of workable for administration into it. Uh, a, any other discussion on second reading? Uh, seeing none, then I will call for the vote. All in favor? Okay, thank you. I think that was unanimous. And Counselor O'Toole.
I move that council have third reading of bylaw C-1260-116 at this meeting.
Okay, thanks very much, Counselor O'Toole. So obviously, uh, we all know what that means, a motion to have third and final reading. Um, if it doesn't pass, then, uh, we would have an opportunity for all those things to happen. Um, is there any discussion or debate as to the merits of having third and final reading this evening? Okay, seeing none, then I will call for the vote. All in favor? And opposed? Okay, uh, so that was one in favor and the balance opposed. Thanks very much. And, uh, good, good discussion, council, and, and thanks to administration for, uh, the great report on a complex topic. And we'll deal with it, uh, uh, at our next council meeting. So move on next to, uh, bylaw C-1260-117. I believe that is with respect to office uses in the general industrial district. Mr. Drosh?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Uh, yeah, so 117 is in regards to offices in the general industrial district. So currently, offices aren't allowed in the de, general industrial district. However, um, throughout the city, we do have offices in the general industrial district. It may be because they were built before the current land use bylaw. It may also be because some of them are approved under, uh, more industrial uses that have an office component. Such as general contractor or oilfield support. Um, the lack of offices in the IG district creates challenges when processing development permits. Um, for uses that we think are valid in the industrial district. Um, so, uh, normally, some office-based businesses want to be in industrial districts in close proximity to the clients that they serve. So this includes things like surveying companies or engineering firms or workplace health and safety consultants. And so, um, it's beneficial to allow these businesses in these areas. And also there are some cases where businesses have a very large office component, but they're also predominantly industrial. So they may also have, uh, industrial bays or an outdoor storage yard. And so it becomes challenging to approve some desirable development. Also, as the city expands, some of our older residential areas are, are less on the outskirts. And so there are vacant properties that are potentially ideal for this type of development. Because of their close proximity to both industrial uses, but also other commercial centers. Um, so, uh, the summary is that there are valid cases for including offices in the industrial areas. Um, and the proposed amendment would make it easier to include some of these larger scale industrial developments that include the large office components. Uh, and administration recommends that council give all three readings to these proposed amendments. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Mr. Drosh. Any questions for administration before we get into, uh, any presentations or submissions? So I don't see anybody. Um, I, I did have one, uh, Mr. Drosh. So the definition of offices major and minor permitted, is it, are there any sort of bounds on what types of? How specific does it get into types of uses? You mentioned some, like such as surveying or engineering. Um, and I can see, I appreciate that perspective. But how broad does, you know, could accounting fit in, in an industrial district now? For example, or, or other types of real general office use?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So it is somewhat broad. Um, it, it could include something like an accountant. So the only real limitations is potentially on, on health uses that have their own distinct, um, n, uh, definition in the bylaw. But otherwise, it is fairly open.
Okay, good. I just wanted to be able to understand that. Okay, thank you. Any other questions for administration? Seeing none, then, uh, we'll go to the presentation submission portion of the public hearing. Uh, again, I'll ask if there's any member of the public who wish to make a presentation on this topic. And I'll just check with the administration again to confirm, uh, whether or not there was anybody who had attended City Hall. Uh, or who had been dialing, planning on dialing in, uh, for this presentation. Mr. Bork?
Uh, I can confirm that, uh, no one has come to City Hall to present.
Okay, okay, thanks very much, Mr. Bork. Um, and, uh, just to confirm, if a member of the public had called, uh, and wished to dial in from their residence or their workplace of business, would they have been able to attend this meeting? Would administration been able, prepared to share that information with them?
Uh, yes, correct. Uh, as we did with delegations that appeared in the afternoon session, we would have made arrangements for them to, uh, dial into this meeting as well.
Okay, that's great. Thanks very much, Mr. Bork. Okay, so we can confirm that there weren't any members of the public that were, uh, had inquired about dialing in or, or attending this, uh, public hearing. Uh, so with that being the case, I will close the public hearing and we'll move on to business arising. I'd look for a motion for first reading. Counselor Thieson.
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. I would move that council give first reading to bylaw C-1260-117, being an amendment to the land use bylaw.
Thanks very much, Counselor Thieson. Any, sorry, no discussion or debate on first reading. I'll call for the vote. Uh, all those in favor? Thank you. And, uh, I believe that was unanimous. So need, no need to call for any opposed. Um, Counselor Thieson, welcome on.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would move that, uh, council give second reading to bylaw C-1260-117.
Thanks very much, Counselor Thieson. So motion for second reading, uh, open for discussion and debate. Um, is there anyone, uh, on discussion or debate on this topic? So, um, I will, uh, enter to say that I'm, uh, I'm going to vote in opposition to the amendment as proposed. Um, my concern is actually the overly broad definition. Um, and I guess it really depends on council's intent, on where we want to drive certain types of development. And certain types of, of, uh, business activity. Um, I can appreciate on the one hand that having a very wide, diverse ability for any type of business to locate anywhere within some boundaries. Uh, you know, um, is useful for both the businesses and for, uh, property owners who may wish to sell or lease buildings to those businesses. At the same time, council may wish to strategically, uh, encourage certain types of businesses to locate in certain areas. Um, and, you know, being very specific, I'm concerned about whether an amendment like this will erode the, uh, desire of professional businesses to locate in the downtown core. Um, I think, uh, there's a significant risk of that. Uh, we already see, uh, a number of, uh, over the years, the city has, um, I think with good intent. Supported a whole bunch of, uh, recreation and fitness uses to locate into industrial areas. Um, and I actually, uh, sort of regret those decisions, as I see yoga places in industrial areas and other health and fitness places in industrial areas. Um, I think those activities might be better, uh, in other locations. And on this one specifically, I'm really concerned about the overly broad definition of office use. And basically eroding demand in the central core. Um, and I, I think that that's a concern to our community over time. Uh, and so for those reasons, I won't be supporting the amendment as proposed. Um, if, in the future, if this was defeated and if it came back, uh, with a more narrow definition that was specific to types of offices. Um, as Mr. Drosh mentioned, some, you know, are more clearly industrial, uh, may have a need for a whole bunch of trucks or something like that. Uh, then I could see that, but, uh, with the overly broad definition, I can't support it this time. And I, I'd encourage council to think about the strategic implications of how we want our community to, to grow over time. Um, that's all I, that's all I wanted to say on that. Um, is there any other discussion or debate on second reading? Where, Palat?
Um, I, I actually agree with Mayor Given on this one. I, I don't think it'd hurt us to pause and took, take a, a conversation on this one a bit more. If we approve it today as it is, we haven't taken that pause. Um, I'm not actually convinced we've done a lot of consultation on this one. I haven't had any pushback from people. But I would think people that have a serious amount of office space in their area that I would know would have pushed back if they were more aware of this. So I'm a little bit concerned about that as well, so I won't be supporting this tonight either.
Thanks, Counselor Palat. Um, any other discussion or debate? Um, Counselor O'Toole?
Thank you very much, Mayor Given, for bringing those points up. I was a little confused at first. Uh, and, uh, I do agree with you, uh, and, but I think that, uh, it sort of eroded the business community downtown where offices should be. Not necessarily in, in all the industrial areas. Uh, there's got to be a fine mix though. And, uh, I would like to see more, uh, definition, uh, not so much broaden, but narrow down. And, uh, I'm not going to be voting for this either.
Thanks, Counselor O'Toole. Any other discussion or debate? Um, I will, uh, I will, uh, building on our last discussion about, uh, land use bylaw change that had, you know, potential significant implications. If, uh, second reading passed, uh, but the motion to have third and final reading did not pass. That might give us some time to do that additional public consultation. Um, and so if council members were interested, rather than defeating this, providing additional time for it to have some public consultation. And for people to potentially draft, uh, amendment proposals. Um, you could pass second reading, defeat the motion to have third reading. Uh, and then again, we would have that, uh, break of a couple of weeks where that discussion with, uh, stakeholders, uh, and administration could happen. Any amendments at third reading. Counselor Clayton?
Thanks, Mayor Given. Just a question, uh, so, in process question. Um, second reading is approved, third read, uh, you know, third, to have third reading isn't approved. There's, remind me of the consultation, um, timeline in that process. As opposed to, uh, you don't support second reading tonight, the thing dies on the table, someone has to bring it back. Like, I think one probably lends to more consultation than the other. And so can you clarify that for me?
Uh, I stand corrected, uh, if I get this wrong. But so if it died on the tape, like if it, if second reading was defeated, then for it to come back would require a whole new public hearing. And, uh, and associated public advertising, uh, which would be the space of a number of weeks, uh, and I looked to administration.
Some expense, but po, possibly more time, right?
Yeah, yeah, and so, so defeating it would, would, uh, definitely have more time. Um, and yeah, so I mean, up, up to council members. Um, and maybe I'll just look to administration what the, so if this was defeated, how long would, uh, public advertising be required to, to initiate a new public hearing? Mr. Drosh?
Um, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I would have to verify this, simply because there is a clause where if an amendment is defeated. There needs to be a six-month period before a new amendment can be introduced that is similar in nature. I'm not sure, I'd have to verify whether this pertains to this type of amendment as well. I've only encountered it with rezonings. Um, as for, uh, advertising, it's roughly two weeks.
Uh, just, sorry, Counselor Thieson, your microphone is still on for all three bites. Okay, sorry. Thanks, Mr. Drosh. Sorry, just finished that last comment.
Um, simply for advertising, um, i- it's about, it's two weeks.
So, so it could be, you know, re-initiate, could be a minimum of an additional two weeks. But there would likely be, you know, uh, some time before that and, and, uh, that adverti, the advertising would have to actually be out for four weeks, wouldn't it?
Um, sorry, uh, Mr. Mayor, so it's about, um, it's a, it's co, it's actually more like three weeks. Um, the ads have to run in the paper, um, two consecutive weeks, at least one week before the public hearing. Um, so, yeah, that's roughly three weeks.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Drosh. Uh, Counselor Blackburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Um, I, I think that if this gets reintroduced with, um, limitations on the types of offices that would be allowed. Um, there may be more interest in a public hearing. Because there may be some, some types of businesses that would want to come to us and, and convince us to appreciate why they should be there. And so I think, excuse me, I think a second public hearing is probably in order.
Okay, thanks, Counselor Blackburn. Any other discussion or debate on second reading? I don't see anybody. Just sort of look, okay. Then I don't see any other discussion or debate on second reading, so I will call for the vote on second reading. All in favor? See, three in favor and opposed. And so that is five opposed. So the motion on second reading is defeated. And I'll look to our clerk. Do we need a motion to rescind first reading? Or, I don't believe we do, do we? It was just defeated at second reading. Okay, thank you. Okay, I believe that concludes our business on 1260-118. We'll move on to 1260-118. Mr. Deroch, this is your show tonight.
Thank you, Mayor Given. So yes, 118 is related to reference to committee as the development authority in the land use bylaw. So the land use bylaw currently refers to the Infrastructure and Protective Services Committee. This committee has been renamed the Infrastructure and Economic Development Committee. Since the name has changed, that requires revising the land use bylaw. In this addition of the change, we are simply referring throughout the land use bylaw to the committee and directing readers to the procedures bylaw to determine the appropriate committee. That way, in the future, if the responsibilities of a committee are changed or the name of a committee is changed, we don't have to do an extensive amendment to the land use bylaw. So this is simply to clarify that readers should go to the procedure bylaw to determine what committee is the development authority in cases where items are referred to committee. So our recommendation is that council give all three readings to the proposed amendments.
Thanks very much, Mr. Deroch. Any questions for administration at this stage? Reed, Reed, I had a question. Is there, is there any other? So the effect of this seems to me that it would require somebody who is looking for, is dealing with a land use issue or a development permitting issue that's in the land use bylaw, they pick up the land use bylaw and the land use bylaw says, okay, you're gonna need to go to the committee, now find the City of Grand Prairie's procedure bylaw to find out what committee it is. And so I just, is, is that, am I understanding that right? Like, I appreciate, yeah, am I understanding that correctly?
Thank you, Mayor Given. So technically, yes. We would expect that anyone involved in the process would like to be working with the department. We think it's fairly clear what committee it should go to. But yes.
Yeah, okay, okay. And does administration have any other recommendations on how to operationalize this so that it's as clear and transparent for a user of the bylaw? Because we do, from time to time, get smaller, I wanna say smaller builders or homeowners that may have to use the bylaw, who might not be as familiar. So is there, can you give me any confidence that there would be lots of ways for somebody to understand that, rather than getting sort of caught in a circular bylaw referring to a bylaw, which, you know, just makes them have to understand how to search our site that much better? Go ahead, Mr. Deroch.
Sorry, I, I'm just thinking, so, Mr. Mayor, it is, it is somewhat circular in, in that sense?
Well, and sorry, maybe circular is the wrong term, because it doesn't refer them back and then back and then back. But it does mean that, I, I came looking, and I'll be, and again, I'm, I'm asking at this stage, rather than voting against it or amending or anything. But, you know, if administration can give me some confidence that any user of the land use bylaw wouldn't have to go and seek the city's procedure bylaw every time, you know, they're a first-time user of the land use bylaw and they're trying to use it, and all it does is bury them into a couple of other bylaws. So can you give me any confidence that there's some way that that wouldn't happen? You know, or some administrative process that would guide them through that to help them understand or something else? And I don't, this might be better for the city manager or for the director. I'm, I'm totally fine with whoever wanted to sort of respond to that. Director Glavine?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Given. This might be something that we could add as a definition in the land use bylaw that defines what committee means within it, so that we don't, we can refer to committee throughout the land use bylaw and only change the definition as committee changes. I'll refer to Reed if that would solve the situation.
Certainly. So, thank you, Brian. If council wanted to take that approach, which was kind of my original draft was that, if you refer to the bylaw itself, we include a definition of committee. And so if council was concerned about referring people to another bylaw, we could do an as amended to add the name of the committee in that definition. And that way, when the land use bylaw does need to be updated in the event of changes, it would only be that one particular section.
Okay, so would, so would that have, so the proposed amendment in front of us today isn't that, though? Is that correct, Mr. Deroch?
So, Mr. Mayor, the proposed amendment includes a definition of committee. It refer, it, it defines committee as a standing committee of council that is designated as a development authority in accordance with the procedure bylaw. Now, we could do an as amended and say that, at the current time, it is the Infrastructure and Economic Development Committee, which is subject to change from time to time.
Okay, it sounds like you had that wording already typed up once. Okay, so, so if, okay, thank you very much for answering that. So if it, council wanted to make that amendment, you would have appropriate wording to suggest to us? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, okay. Okay, so that, thank, thank you for answering those questions before we went to second reading. Counselor Thieson, did you have something?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Given. I was just curious. Perhaps this, this sort of wraparound search engine couldn't be bundled up and taken care of with use of technology? If we had like a hyperlink attached to the committee, I could easily take you on our new website program to the procedures bylaw, and then you'd understand what the committees are. And all it would be is like the click of a button or the swipe of a finger. If that's a potential solution, is, I, I, we might be overthinking it, I think, in a sense, but.
Okay, so we're on, we were on, sorry, this is before first reading, I think, actually. I asked the question before we got into it. So I'll, I'll look for, if there were no other questions for administration, then I'll look for a motion for first reading. Counselor Blackburn?
Thank you. I, I love these kinds of changes that are far more efficient in terms of policy and procedure. So I'm happy to move that council give first reading to bylaw C-12, the amendment, 1260-118, being an amendment to the L U B.
Thanks very much, Counselor Blackburn. Of course, that's 1260-118.
Yes, sorry.
No problem. Any, sorry, no discussion or debate on first reading? I'll call for the vote on first reading. Please vote. Let's see if that motion carries. Counselor Blackburn, do you want to continue with second reading?
Yes, thank you. I move that council give second reading to bylaw C-1260-118.
Thanks very much, Counselor Blackburn. Any discussion or debate on second reading? I don't see any, then I'll call for the vote on second reading. All in favor? Thank you. Counselor Plot? No, no, okay, just voting, okay. Then I will look to Counselor Blackburn for a motion to have third reading.
Thank you. I would move that council have third reading of bylaw C-1260-118 at this meeting.
Okay, thanks very much, Counselor Blackburn. Any discussion or debate on the merits of having a third and final reading? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. All in favor? That motion does pass unanimously. And Counselor Blackburn?
Thank you. I move that council give third reading to bylaw C-1260-118, being an amendment to the land use bylaw.
Okay, thanks very much, Counselor Blackburn. I, now I'll look to the clerk. Do I have the ability in a public hearing to make a motion? Or an amendment to a motion?
We are no longer in the public hearing portion. We are now in business arising. And yes, you can.
So, so that being the case, then I guess, Counselor O'Toole, are you currently deputy mayor? Or is it?
I am.
So I'll ask you to take the chair, Counselor O'Toole. I'll propose the amendment.
Okay, I'll just move over then.
Yeah, so, thanks very much, Mr. Carver. I'd like to propose an amendment. I'd like to propose that council amend the land use bylaw to, sorry, bylaw, amend, bylaw amendment 1260-118 to reflect the change to the definition section as written on the screen. And, and speaking of this, it is, I know it is a bit of, you know, it's kind of a relatively minor thing, but I think that this is the type of stuff that gives governments a bad name when somebody goes looking for information and they can't find it in the place that they expect it and they get referred to another place and then sometimes moves over to another place. And the more that we can do at an early stage like this once, to make it easier for people to understand, the, the less pain we will cause our customers and the users of the bylaw over time. And if from time to time, we have to make a small amendment or an update like this to change the name of the committee, well, then fine. But I think in the end, we, this one changed, this one small change, you know, is the type, is in a document that many, many people use. And so let's do it now, let's get it easier to use and make it so that people don't start cursing us when they have to use it and then they have to go and find a second bylaw to figure out where they're supposed to go.
And that's my motion, my amendment and motion, Counselor O'Toole.
Okay. I see there was, somebody had their hands up there. I was just trying to, Mr. Blackburn, go ahead.
Thank you. And I hate to do this to you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, but I'm going to suggest that the amendment is not in order because it's contrary to the spirit of the original motion, which was to do away with the need for changes to the bylaw.
Oh, well, thank you. Now I'm tongue tied.
Perhaps our clerk would have a comment on that.
Mr. Carpershusky?
Hello. Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. There is rules around amendments. They need to be germane to the original motion. At this time, Mayor Given has made an amendment to the motion to reflect the change to the definition of committee, to reflect the development authority in accordance with the procedure bylaw, being the Infrastructure and Economic Development Committee. This, this, I feel this motion is in order as it stands because its intent is to make this bylaw stand on its own. So I feel Mayor Given has the ability to debate the intent to this motion and that this assembly has the opportunity to have, participate in that discussion.
With most respect, thank you very much. Any follow-up? Gonna ask one more time. Any follow-up, Mayor Given?
Thanks, Deputy Mayor O'Toole. Yeah, I, so just to Counselor Blackburn's point. So my motion really only deal, is, is only amending one small part of the overall proposed amendments in 118. If you look in the package, and you have to go fairly far through our council package, it looks like it's on page seventy-four of our council document. In there, it is, I'm really referring to just the, the initial sort of, I think it is A to D, where it talks about, sorry, not even A to D. Really in D is about the only one that I'm changing. This amendment would apply to, to sec, to point D, where it says in Section 10 definitions, add the following. As it, as it was presented in our package, it says, "Committee means the standing committee of council that is designated by the development authority in accordance with the procedure bylaw." And I'd note that there is a link, it looks like there is a link. My amendment is to clarify that by, by the wording, adding the wording on the screen here, replacing that with the wording on the screen. So really, it's just on D to add the wording, as Mr. Deroch was kind enough to type up for us on screen, and replacing that. There are a number of other changes throughout the bylaw that are being proposed in this amendment in 118, and I'm not proposing to change any of the rest of those, just this one part on the definition. So better defining which committee we mean.
All right. Thank you very much. Any other con, any other more conversation around the table here? Comments, concerns? Okay, so I see that there are none, so we can move on to vote on the amendment. And I move, or I'm, call for the vote. All in favor? I can't see, so, did that get all counted for?
That looked like we had seven in favor, Counselor O'Toole.
Okay. And those are gains?
Thank you.
And one opposed.
Okay, thank you very much. So we're, that passes, and we'll move on to the third reading.
Uh, and I, sorry, I see the clerk had something to say.
Okay.
I, my apologies, Deputy Mayor O'Toole. Do you wish to continue with this meeting? Or Mayor Given, do you wish to resume the chair?
Yes.
I'm a little stressed out now, so I'll, I'll move up to the chair now.
Thanks, Deputy Mayor O'Toole, for stepping in to take that, take that over. I am happy to resume the chair, having made that motion. And then we can move on to voting on second reading as amended?
Correct, yes.
Okay, so we'll go on to second reading of bylaw C-1260-118 as amended? Is there any other discussion or debate on second reading as amended? Seeing none, then I will call for the vote. All in favor? Thank you. That motion carries unanimously, I believe. And who is our original mover? I'm sorry, I've lost, lost track.
I think, I think that was me.
Yeah.
Oh, thanks, Counselor Blackburn.
All right, so I would move that council have third reading of bylaw C-1260-118. Is it on? Oh, I'm sorry, we were on third reading, were we not, Harleen? Because I, I seem to recall already having made that phrase.
That is correct, Counselor Blackburn. We had made the original motion to give third reading, which Mayor Given then amended. And then we voted on that motion and carried the amended third reading.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Secretary. Sorry, Counselor Blackburn, I, I confused the issue there by trying to get you to make more motions. My apologies.
I'll turn my mic off now.
I'm feeling happy that I called third reading and then the mayor took over, so there you go.
Yeah, you, you had it right, Counselor O'Toole. Okay, so we'll move on to our next public hearing on land use bylaw amendment C-1260-118.
Radius measurement for limited uses. I would call this public hearing to order and look to administration for an introduction. Mr. Drosh.
Thank you, Mayor Given. So the proposed amendments are in regards to buffer measurements for limited uses. There we go. So secondary suites and retail cannabis uses are both limited within a geographic area. This is enforced through a buffer measurement, and the current wording creates a loophole that allows a development to exceed those limits. So to illustrate, I've kind of created a scenario here. So the blue squares represent existing secondary suites, and the green squares represent a proposed secondary suite, while the yellow circle represents the fifty meter radius. So you can see in this first development, there are three total secondary suites within the radius. And so the proposed unit is conforming. In development two, a new secondary suite is proposed, and again, there are only three, including the proposed one within the radius, and therefore it is conforming. In scenario, in development three, again, a new one is proposed, and there are only three units, including the proposed one, within the fifty meter radius. And the end result is that from the original development, there are now five units within that radius, where the intent of the regulations is to limit to three. And so this is caused because the current wording only measures the radius from the proposed suite and not from existing ones near it. And so the proposed changes are to indicate that a proposed development cannot cause an existing one to become nonconforming, and to clarify that this will be verified by also measuring that limiting buffer from existing developments nearby. And so the proposed changes close that loophole and meet the original intent of the buffer regulations. And our administration's recommendation is that counsel give all three readings to the proposed bylaw. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Drosh. Any questions for administration at this stage? Counsel Menhoss, then Counsel Plott, and then Counsel Clayton. Counsel Menhoss?
Uh, no, not my question. I don't think I should be voting this one because it's related to cannabis store, I think.
Okay. Okay, so Counselor Menhoss, so you're going to declare conflict of interest on this item?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. And the council member can do that, so if you'll, as we, or, there you go. If you want to turn your microphone off and turn your camera off, we'll say that that's, counsel's leaving the room. Counselor Plott?
Uh, thanks, Mayor Given. I also need to declare conflict of this one as well, so I will be in the same quiet as Counsel Menhoss.
Okay, thanks very much, Counsel Plott. So if you'll turn your microphone off and your camera off. And Counsel Clayton? Your microphone's not on.
Thanks, Mayor Given. I just had a question for administration. Can you tell me in regards to either the industry of home builders, developers, or cannabis retailers, what the consultation process was?
Mr. Drosh?
Um, to the mayor, there was no consultation for this proposed change. It is to address a loophole that was the intent of the original amendment, and there was significant consultation for those original ones when those buffers were proposed.
So correct me if I'm wrong, did we not at some point have something scheduled for consultation with developers in regards to what secondary suite amendments were going to look like? And if so, would this not have been a good time to do it all at once, so we don't have to bring these bylaws and any changes back after consultation?
Mr. Drosh?
Um, to the mayor, so I, I, it's administration's opinion that it's worthwhile to address loopholes as quickly as they're identified. I don't have any direction on an upcoming review of secondary suite standards. I know there was an update on them, but I am not aware of any upcoming amendments.
Yeah, there, there may be something on the outstanding items list of one of the committees, I think. So, yeah, okay.
There is.
Okay, so, questions before we get into the, to the public hearings? Any other questions for administration? Counsel Thieson, and then Counsel Blackburn?
Uh, thank you very much, Mayor Given. Mr. Drosh, just in regards to these changes, are there any developments or secondary suites or cannabis stores, I guess, since those are the things you're talking about, that already, I guess, sort of contradict, or have found the loophole and already exist, and would they be grandfathered in?
Thank you. To the mayor, I don't have specific figures. My understanding are that there are one or two, and they would be grandfathered in.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Drosh. Counsel Blackburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Forgive me, Mr. Drosh, but I'm, I found this one to be a little confusing. Maybe it's just my aptitude in this particular area, but can you tell me in a brief description how the loophole is being closed?
Sure. To the mayor, so currently, the problem is when a new development is proposed, the radius is only measured from the proposed development, and so it can be within the boundary of an existing one, but not other ones that are nearby, and so a new development would in...
The case... Okay, re, you know, you're, you're experiencing significant lag right now, for me at least. I don't know if other council members are seeing the same thing. Counsel, can I get a, yeah, okay. So I think other council members are also seeing the lag. This is just probably what's going to happen with technology this way. So you may need to pause just for a second. We'll see if it, the lag caught up and maybe give that answer a try again.
Okay. Am I coming in more clearly now? Okay. So taking off from, currently, the radius is only measured from proposed ones, and this can cause existing ones to become nonconforming. The way we're addressing this is that when a proposed one comes in, we first measure the radius from that proposed one, and then when there are other uses within that radius, we measure the radius from those again to verify whether or not the proposed one would make them nonconforming. So basically, right now, we only check whether or not that limit is exceeded for the proposed one, and we will fix this by measuring the radius around nearby ones as well to make sure the proposed one doesn't make them nonconforming.
Thank you, that's very clear.
Thanks very much, Mr. Drosh. Okay, so this was still the questions for administration stage? Were there any other questions for administration? Seeing none, then we will move on to the presentation submission portion of the public hearing. I will ask if there's anyone on the, in the council meeting that wishes to make a presentation related to the radius measurement for limited uses, bylaw, land use bylaw amendment C-1260-119. And I'll ask Mr. Bork again, since this is a practice we've established. Mr. Bork, was there anyone who had intended to speak to this today? Or who has attended City Hall?
Uh, no one has attended City Hall for this item.
Okay, and was there anyone who had called in expressing an interest to speak to this?
Uh, no, not that we're aware.
Okay, thank you very much. So with that, then we will close the public hearing, and we will move on to business arising. I would look for a motion for first reading. Counsel Thieson?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would move that counsel give first reading to bylaw C-1260-118 being an amendment to the land use bylaw. Oh, wait, nope. One night, sorry, I was one, one behind on my list.
119?
119, yeah.
Yeah, thank you. So a motion for first reading, no discussion or debate. I'll call for the vote, all in favor? Thank you. Okay, that motion carries. Counsel Thieson?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would move that counsel give second reading to bylaw C-1260-119.
Thanks very much, Counsel Thieson. Any discussion or debate on second reading? Counselor Clayton? And your microphone, Counsel Clayton?
It's a little slower than I am. As with some, two of the prior discussion, public hearings, I think that there's been a shortage of consultation opportunity on this. I, I would vote to, I will support the motion for second reading. However, I will encourage counsel to not allow third reading in order for industry to have some consultation period, particularly in regards to secondary suites. As it's, there is some discussion on a committee outstanding items list. I think that it's a good use of time to do this all at once. So I will support second reading, but I won't be supporting third reading. Thank you.
Thanks, Counsel Clayton. Any other discussion or debate? Seeing none, then I will call for the vote on second reading. Please vote, all in favor? That motion carries. Counsel Thieson?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would move that counsel have third reading for bylaw C-1260-119.
Thanks very much, Counsel Thieson. So a motion to have third and final reading this evening must pass unanimously. You've all know that routine. Any discussion or debate as to the merits of having third and final reading here this evening? Seeing none, then I will call for the vote. Please vote. One, two, three, four, four, I believe, yeah. And opposed? Two opposed, so that motion does not carry unanimously, so this would come back for third and final reading in our next council meeting. Okay, we can invite Counselor, sorry, Counsel Clayton? Do you have something further on this? Your microphone, Counsel Clayton?
I don't know if I need a motion for this per se, but I'm happy to make a motion if administration requires one. I would just ask that consultation with developers, it's a good time to tie in the item that's on the outstanding items list, in my opinion, and have a fulsome conversation in regards to what this looks like. If administration, maybe Director Glavine can comment if you'd like a motion, that's fine. I just, I'll leave it for the CAO or Director Glavine to comment if they think a motion is warranted.
Director Glavine?
Yes, thanks, Mayor. Uh, as far as the outstanding items list, that is a review of the RS district and some of the regulations. I believe in the MDP, we're allowed a higher percentage of RS in outline plans, and is a review of those relaxations that will be coming back in June, which is our current timeline. So as far as linking them together, we'd either have to delay this or move up the other in concert, if we wanted them to come together.
Yeah, you know, Counsel Clayton, I think the other thing, I appreciate your intent, would be to ensure that industry's fully informed and has an opportunity to comment on this prior to third reading, or to, you know, have discussion with council members or whatever. I suggest that, that, you know, so, third reading will come back at our next council meeting. Their council could defeat it or amend it, and it would be up to council members to consider if they wanted to see any amendments to this. And you may seek opinions on that, I suppose, but as it stands now, since we are in a public hearing, yeah, it will come back at the next council meeting. So, you know, yeah. I don't know that, and again, I'll look to our clerk, I don't know that we can ask to have third reading come back at some other date.
Thank you, Mayor Given. You could make a motion to postpone third reading of this bylaw to a future council meeting.
Okay. Yeah, so we, we could do that, and the challenge obviously is that it, having been the subject of a public hearing, it would be challenging for any other parties to make representative, like, there wouldn't be a for, there's no new public hearing part, right? Like, third reading will show up again, and council members could propose amendments, by all means, but there wouldn't be a new public hearing where somebody, any stakeholder would be able to come in and provide their opinion on what those amendments should be. So, you know, so, so it will come back. If council members have ideas about how it could be improved or changed, then we'd be free to make those, just like with the other bylaws that we had previously. We could, you know, be free to propose them at third reading, or defeat third reading and then direct administration to do further consultation. Would be my suggestions. But I think directing administration to do further consultations between now and then, I'm not sure that they would have, I think council members have the ability to make any amendments at this stage. Like, when it comes back.
Sure, yeah.
Yeah, okay. So, so it will come back at our next meeting. Council members get a chance to think about the issue, to think about if there are changes that they would like to see, how you might propose those amendments.
Sure, and I, I guess then just a note, no direction per se, but I just think it's really unfortunate that we would be doing any amendments to the bylaw that has something that has impact on an industry that we've continually said we would have consultation whenever possible at the forefront of all conversation, and we didn't have it on this one. So I'll, I'll look for specific amendments, come back for third reading, but I just think that this is unfortunate.
Yeah, thanks for that, Counsel Clayton. Okay, so the motion to have third and final reading was defeated, so that deals with all that business that will come back in our next council meeting. And we're now into the public hearing for the municipal development plan amendment, C-1237P, school site guidelines. And Mr. Welton has joined us. Mr. Welton?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a in-house proposed amendment to the municipal development plan in order to add guidelines for the development of school sites. In March of 2019, we prepared and presented a school site strategy report to the Infrastructure and Protective Services Committee. At that time, the committee received the report for information and directed administration to request feedback on the strategy from the UDI group. The, one of the recommendations in the school site, site strategy report was the preparation of school site design guidelines for inclusion into the municipal development plan. So what we did was is we prepared those draft guidelines and circulated both the school site strategy report and the draft school site guidelines to the UDI GP group in, I guess it was in July of 2019. In September of 2019, they indicated that they did not have any concerns with either the school site strategy report or the draft guidelines. I am going to sort of pause for a second here and try and figure out how to get my... Sorry about this, Mr. Mayor, I'm trying to, kind of, there we go. Uh, the, the school site design guidelines were also circulated to the local school boards for their comment and concern, and they responded that they don't have any concerns with these draft guidelines either. Section eight is proposed to be added to Part Five. Part Five deals specifically with urban design standards, urban design guidelines within the state Grand Prairie. So what this amendment would do is add Section 5.8 to the municipal development plan. Section 5.8 deals with guidelines for the location and design of school sites within neighborhoods. It proposes that these, that schools be centrally located, recognizing that the center of an outline plan area isn't necessarily the center of the neighborhood, but the idea is to locate the schools kind of in the center of the neighborhood, to provide pedestrian access to all sides of the site, to recommend that school sites be on corner lots, that they have adequate street frontage. It suggests that high schools be close to arterial roads because they generate a lot of traffic, and, and street patterns for the, in the neighborhood be such that no residential driveways are across the street from the school. The illustration that is in the MDP proposed amendment kind of illustrates some of those concepts. One is obviously, the north end has single-family lots back directly onto the school site so that there's no conflict with driveways. The one on the right has flanking side yards, so again, there's no driveway conflict. And then on the bottom, lean access onto the back of those lots so that those, those lots do not have driveways that back onto the, or front onto the school site. So again, the, the drawing is an illustration of the concepts that are in Section 5.8. Section 5.9 relates more to the integration of the schools into the residential neighborhood. One, by setting school sites, or schools, close to the street. Kind of a standard thing in urban design is that the closer buildings are to the street, the better the pedestrian environment is. Putting parking on the sides of the buildings, not between the building and the street, and again, keeps the building close to the road. Separate bus loops for the buses and from the, you know, the path of the parents dropping their kids off in passenger vehicle loops. The bus loops be within the school site and not out onto the road allowance. That's kind of a thing that's come up in a couple of recent school developments. And that the, that driveways line up with existing intersections. And again, as before, the illustration kind of shows some of the concepts that, that are in the regulations. And kind of, it's intended to help, sort of, in some respects, a layperson to understand what the, what these concepts are meant to look like in a, in a future land use plan. We, as I mentioned, we circulated this to the UDI and to the school boards. We did not receive any comments. We circulated, or we advertised this in the newspaper in accordance with requirements of the act, and we did not receive any, any comments or concerns. And therefore, we're recommending that council give this first, second, and third reading. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks very much, Mr. Stroh. Before we move into first reading, are there any questions for administration? Counselor Palat?
Thanks, Mayor Given. Just a question on this. One of the things I'm wondering if we considered was the size of the site itself.
Through the mayor, the school site strategy report recommended that the size of school sites go down from five hectares to four. The size of school sites is actually identified, I think, in the Parks Design Report, or Parks Design Manual. And so that's where that would need to be made. But certainly, part of the recommendation is, is that the size of school sites be four hectares, down from five, which was the previous standard. And we've actually, sort of, when we are reviewing plans, we are using that as kind of the standard.
Thanks for that, Mr. Welton.
Any other questions for administration at this stage? Counselor O'Toole? Sorry, Counsel O'Toole, you're gonna have to get your microphone there. We missed the first part of that.
Sorry. Mr. Welton, thank you for your presentation. Have we been practicing any of these proposals already? Or are we just, like, the schools that have been built in the last three or four years? Have we been sort of following these guidelines?
Some of them we have. Some, I mean, the idea of, of development on corner lots is, I think it's beneficial. It's not necessarily something that, say, land developers want to, would jump all over because it creates, like, single-loaded streets on a couple of sides. So that's, that's kind of a new thing. And again, these are guidelines, these are not sort of cast-in-stone requirements. There are, some of the things are fairly standard. For example, the idea that accesses, driveway accesses from a school site. Driveway accesses from a school site lining up with existing road intersections. That's, that's a fairly standard thing that engineering has been requiring, you know, for, for many years. So some of this stuff is new, some of it is, is existing practices that are just being put in writing. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much for the response.
Did I see one more hand? Counselor Thiessen, did you have a hand?
Yeah, I did. Thanks, Mayor Given. It was just a comment. I really appreciated the work and the going in this, and the illustration was extremely helpful in allowing me to just plot out a school site in my own mind without having to draw the illustration myself. So that was very helpful. I think, I think this redesign and this adoption into our land use bylaw and the municipal development plan is, is improving community safety, pedestrian safety, and has, I feel like, gone through the proper consultation protocols in order to get this passed through. So I see no, no issues with this. I just want to thank Dan for his work on this site. Thank you.
Thanks, Counsel Thiessen. So seeing that it doesn't look like there are any other questions for administration at this stage, I would ask for any presentations or submissions with respect to these proposed amendments to the municipal development plan. I will ask administration if there's anyone who has attended at City Hall to, with the intention of making a presentation on this item. Mr. Bork?
I confirm no one has attended, I confirm that no one has attended at City Hall, and we're not aware of anyone wishing to present.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Bork. So I would just make that note that administration did make avenues for any members of the public who wish to present on this item. Doesn't appear that anybody is taking us up on the offer at this time. And so I will close the presentation submission portion of the public hearing, and we'll move on to business arising. I would look for a motion for first reading. Counselor Minhaus?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'll move counsel to give the first reading to bylaw C-1237P, being amended to the municipal development plan.
Thanks very much, Counselor Minhaus. No discussion or debate on first reading. I will call for the vote. All in favor? Thank you. That motion carries unanimously, I believe. Counselor Minhaus?
Give the second reading to bylaw C-1237P.
Thanks very much, Counselor Minhaus. A motion for second reading open for discussion and debate. Is there any council member that wishes to launch any discussion or debate on this item? Seeing no one, then I will call for the vote. All in favor? Thank you. That motion carries unanimously, I believe. Again, Counselor Minhaus?
I have third reading of the bylaw C-1237P at the meeting.
So this is a motion to have third and final reading here this evening. Is there any discussion or debate as to the merits of having third and final reading? Seeing, yeah, Counsel O'Toole?
I just, I live across Avondale and Harry Balfour School since 1965, and every house on that block has got a driveway, and right in the middle, there's a crosswalk. And I just want to know that I'm glad that our planning development department is looking into this. And so it doesn't happen again in the future. If you go on the other side, on 108, same thing, there's driveways along. So this is a real push, positive move forward, so thank you very much. And I wish, I would encourage councilor members to vote in favor of this.
Thanks, Counsel O'Toole. So I don't see anybody else on the motion to have third and final reading. I will call for the vote. All in favor? Thank you. That carries unanimously, so we can have third and final reading. Counselor Minhaus?
Yep, can I give the third reading to bylaw C-1237P, being amended to the municipal development plan?
Thanks, Counselor Minhaus. Last opportunity for any discussion or debate on third and final reading. Seeing none, then I will call for the vote. Please vote. All in favor? Thank you. That motion carries unanimously again. And I believe that that handles all of our public hearing business for this afternoon. We will see some of those come back at our next council meeting. We had, oh, our delegation business, I guess, is our, is that our carryover from, sorry, this is a new section for any scheduled delegations. We had none of those this evening. And we get council member reports. I didn't have a chance, counsel, to ask if you had reports from your external agencies, boards, and commissions. So I will just, you know what I'll do is I'll do a roundtable from my screen here and ask, Counsel Bressi, did you have any reports from your external agency boards? No? Counsel O'Toole, did you have any external reports?
Just, just one, Mayor Given. Community Futures. And I gotta tell you, they've been the busiest little beavers in Grand Prairie, trying to get people communicated with. And, and there's been a surge of business, fund, resources being asked for. So in the next little while, there's gonna be some businesses that are gonna benefit here in the next little while, and maybe possibly double their, their workload. So not everything is all tears and gloom, but there are people that are trying to make themselves more successful. And we will be meeting again here next week, so I'll have another report then. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Counsel O'Toole. Counselor Minhaus, did you have any external reports?
Nope.
Counselor Clayton, did you have any reports in the external boards? Counselor Clayton? No, none. Counselor Palat?
Yes, Mayor Given, I had a couple. Just, I guess quickly, we had an economic development committee meeting. Mrs. Lee spoke about most of it earlier. I just wanted to say it was a great conversation. This is a city committee that was comprised of, we had a few guest speakers, including the mayor and most of council on that one. Would normally not be at that committee meeting, but it was, it's pretty topical, so most of council was on the call, as well with industry leaders that were handpicked by the city, be part of the committee. And we also had the chamber, and Wendy from downtown, it was addition, so it was a good conversation. I think Mrs. Lee's gonna have a very busy bucket of work the next little while, so it was good. The next one was just the airport. We had our AGM. We approved our audited statements. Brian and his team have been working diligently to give updates to council, which I much appreciated. We just had one earlier today saying that restricted access now for the airport of only three and a half hours a day. Air Canada's only doing Mondays, Wednesdays, and Fridays flights. And WestJet's down to one flight per day. They're averaging only between five and 20 passengers for flights. So for people that are worried about it, I think there's, it's obviously the traffic lines are quite low and wouldn't be surprised if more cancellations are to come in the future. That's the program as from now until April 30th, from what it sounds like, but changes could be a minute from there. And sadly, the airport is going through like everybody else where they're looking at layoffs and internal ways to blow over their head through these tough times. And that's my report. Thanks, Mayor Given.
Thanks, Counsel Palat. Counselor Thiessen, did you have any external reports?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Given. I did have a couple. I'll just briefly mention the Nighthawk Board Meeting that we just recently had. Just going over sort of the situation in and around the hill to shut down the whole COVID crisis. Not too many updates coming out of that meeting on March 24th. We do have a geotechnical report coming back to, back to our, I guess, our board to take a look at potential issues with slope movement in and around the hill. So we want to be very cautious with that, and we want to make sure that we employ the proper professionals because it could impact the hill. So we're waiting to see how that report turns out, as there was a few concerns with some slopage. Downtown Association met on March 25th, but we've already covered that through the business that we've done. And finally, the Grand Spirit Foundation, which is probably my biggest update, especially considering the climate that we're in with this COVID crisis. So I'll just get right to the quick updates. To date, so far, nobody in any of the Grand Spirit lodges or seniors' homes have COVID at this point, but staff is still being diligent, and we've changed our safety policies to ensure cleanliness and hygiene and proper handwashing policies, et cetera, are all included in that for all staff and visitors of those lodges. But currently, right now, we're still not allowing any visitors into lodges. Some family members have been doing window stopby's and waving to their family and talking on the phone with them there, so that's kind of heartwarming to hear some of those stories. On the, I guess, on that same front, because we don't have any confirmed cases, we do have a plan in case we do have cases to move people out. But we have been told by the province that our lodges would receive priority food supplies if we got to that point. So hopefully we don't, and that's sort of the number one. The other part of the COVID crisis is partially with the carbon tax. As obviously, everybody's budget is impacted, but the federal carbon tax added 7.5% to our overall utility costs, which we have accounted for that in our 2020 budget. But to date, we have not received any instructions on how to get any revenue recovery of those expenses. We got our needs assessment completed. The consultant has provided draft recommendations for future projects, including family housing projects inside the city of Grand Prairie, as well as Grand Prairie and area for seniors' homes, and a Spirit River seniors' housing as well. So those are the three highest needs, and the board is looking at, investigating which one we'll tackle first. My imagination and the conversation at the board meeting seem to point in the direction of our city, which is a good thing. Finally, we went over, I guess I can't say finally, I got lots from this meeting. We talked about lots. We went over our audited financial statements. Everything is good. We had some, some revenue that got put into some of our reserves for future housing purchases. But all in all, everything was good. We cleared off some bad debts, which happens every year. It was a small sum, about $8,000 worth, just of people who didn't end up paying their bills. And again, we also updated our safety policy. We sold some land to accommodate the purchase and the construction of our Spirit River housing complex. We also, for the time being, have postponed the 60th anniversary of the Grand Spirit Foundation. We just received money from the Arts Development Committee for this. The board doesn't have the temperature to cancel at this point, so they said, like, moderate postpone. But we're not sure what our staff capacity is gonna be like once we get to, you know, the later summer and stuff like that. And they may be, because they're working so hard, be dying for a vacation from, from the work that they're putting in. Finally, this is actually finally, we had a correspondence with the, with the province about their budget and how it impacts housing management bodies. So just a little history, in October 2019, there is announced budget reduction of $11 million to the rental assistance programs, and housing management bodies were directed to halt intake into those programs at that time. And we have been asked to continue with that direction until the program redesign is complete in late spring 2020. Could be late summer 2020 at this point. We don't know. So no new applications for rent supplements are being accepted at this time. We've advertised that on, on the website, and tell the existing programs have been reviewed for consistency of benefits and to ensure households that need assistance are prioritized. There's also no new capital funding for housing projects allocated in the 2020 budget, as most of us know. And in regard to housing management bodies, we received a 3.5% reduction in our operational contribution from the province. And their response on that was for us to find efficiencies by endeavoring to reduce variable expenses such as admin costs, materials, supplies, workforce, and utilities, the standard fare, quote unquote. But Steve Madden is a, is a well-versed businessman, and he's done a very great job for Grand Spirit Foundation. We, he's more than confident that we can achieve those numbers within our budget this year. That's all. Thank you.
Thanks, Counsel Thiessen. Counsel Blackburn, did you have any reports from your external agencies, boards, and commissions?
No, I did not.
Okay, thanks. And I think I'm back around, Counsel Clayton, you've moved on my screen, so I think I asked you already, though. I will just provide a very brief update on AUMA. The organization hasn't had a regular board meeting in this last month. We have had at least one meeting for the business corporation, just a telephone conference call. AUMA does have regular committee and board meetings scheduled for later on this month, and so I suspect that the administration team there will update us on a lot of their activities. I can say that they have been very busy in working directly with the government. I've seen a number of emails where the government is actually now relying on AUMA to get the word out to municipal officials and to provide input into the government on some of the changes that they're making pretty rapidly. So I'm really thankful that, in this public health emergency, that when the government is looking to connect with municipal leaders, they're doing that directly. Obviously, with councils and locally elected officials, but they're also doing it through our two associations. And my understanding is that the premier has the, has an ongoing text conversation with the president of AUMA, RMA, and the mayors of Edmonton and Calgary. And so a pretty direct connection, and I'm glad to know that the organization's representing as well. I'm interested to find out more about how they're, you know, the impacts on them as a corporation. I'm sure they're doing some remote working as well, but I suspect that I'll see that at the board meetings coming up towards the end of the month, and I'll update council as any information comes out of that. At this stage, there hasn't been any discussion about conference. The municipal leaders caucus has been deferred, and obviously, the fall convention is something that will be a big topic of discussion. Given that it's a little bit further out, there hasn't been any determination made about that at this stage. But I'll report back as, as I learn more from AUMA. If there wasn't anything else, and I don't know, yeah, we don't have council member roundtable. I will, though, just see if there's anything that any council members want to highlight. Now, we're not attending any public events, but were there any other items that any council members wanted to highlight? Counsel Bressi? Counsel O'Toole?
I'm good.
Counselor Blackburn?
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to mention that I was one of those counselors that attended the Economic Development Advisory Council meeting, and that I really appreciated the invitation to participate. I learned a lot, and, and it was a very worthwhile meeting. Thank you.
Counsel Thiessen? Counsel Palat? Counselor Minhaus?
Good.
Counselor Clayton?
No, thank you.
I, I will just report, just for... I will just report, just for you, council, I think I've reported this to you, but just for the public as well. Over the last couple of weeks, I've really been pleased by the connections from other orders of government. I've had the opportunity to have a phone call with two of our Alberta senators who reached out to find out how things are going in Grand Prairie. I had about a half hour call, one-on-one with the premier, as well as a town hall with the premier, the finance minister, the minister of municipal affairs, and Dr. Hinshaw. And I also had an opportunity, a couple opportunities to speak with both of our MLAs from the region. And so just wanted to report back to all of you that the provincial and federal governments are doing the best they can, I think, to ensure that they're connecting with local leaders through me, and I'm doing my best to represent that, you know, council's views and our community's concerns back to them. And it's all happening pretty rapidly, as we all know, but as best as possible, try to make sure that I keep council and the community informed about those conversations as they happen. I'll use a forum like this to do it. Since I'm not sitting down and having coffee with any of these people, this seems about the most appropriate place to do that. Oh, and I also had a, a conference call, a one-on-one call with Minister Rajan Sahi with respect to homelessness, housing, and FCSS programming, and that was on Saturday. And so again, yeah, I'll just try to make sure that I'm reporting those back to council since we don't get as many informal conversations to be able to sort of share that type of information. I'll try and be better and more mindful about making sure that I let you all know the events and conversations that I'm having. With that, I think we'll call our meeting adjourned. Thanks very much, everybody.
Good night.
Bye, everyone.
Thanks for sticking by. Bye, guys. See you later.